Order. I'd like to welcome everybody here today on this nice spring day. To begin things, I'd like to call on Pastor Ray from Jehovah Jero Christian Center to offer the invocation. Hi. And then we'll have the Blood Religions. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Bishop. Thank you, our Lord.
All that's in question.
Good evening. Good evening to the people of Lee County. And Pastor Ray, thank you for the invitation for the second time. In light of all the changes that we've gone through as a state with HB 318 and the Senate Bill 868, I will be making a prayer for our commissioners. And the prayers that I've been making for each one of you will be as the following. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ that each and one of you will live with a spirit of righteousness in the midst of our crisis. I also pray in the name of Jesus Christ that each and one of you will live a life worthy of your calling to serve. And I pray in the name of Jesus Christ that you serve others as you would like others to serve you also. Father God, in the name of Jesus, I just want to say thank you for such great county, for the commissioners that we have, and for the people of Lee County. I ask, Lord, that you bring a spirit of unity upon all races. In the name of Jesus Christ, may we bless your name at all times, and I bless this meeting. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ray.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay. Are there any additional agenda items? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. The approval of the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Public comments. Dr. Smith. Good afternoon.
Madam, Madam Chairman. We already discussed that.
Yeah.
I'm Lynn Smith, and I'm a member of the Lee County Board of Education. And I'm obviously here to speak on the purchase of the Wicker School property that I understand is on your agenda this evening. And it's pretty well known that Board of Education formally picked that as our choice site some months ago. And I'm certainly here to reiterate that that remains our choice site. And in particular, the house on Nash Street that's been a bit of a point of question lately. We certainly would encourage the purchase of that house. Its proximity certainly would lend its use to our service. And I'm sure we'll find a good purpose for it. But even if we didn't, knowing what's going on over southernly with a house in a similar circumstance, I think it'd be just terribly short sighted if we didn't include that in the purchase. So I want to thank the commissioners for your leadership and your cooperation in making this a reality. I think educationally, this site serves our needs. And from a downtown revitalization prospect, will serve our community well. And I hope that you will continue with your intent to purchase that property. Let's make it a reality, and let's make it something absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay. We've been along to Old Business, the presentation from CCC on Community College Bond Projects. Mr. Hobbs, and I don't see Dr. Marchip, but there you are. Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here today and to bring you up to date with our exciting construction projects. Without further ado, I'll turn it over to the college's architect, Taylor Hobbs.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's a pleasure to be here today and talk a little bit about these important projects. Again, my name is Taylor Hobbs. I'm with Hobbs Architects from Pittsboro. I'm here today with Stephanie Brooker, who's an interior designer in our office, Allison Blanks, she's an architect, and Siobhan File is an architect. And they're all working on these projects. So...
Excuse me, one second. You all look like kids. I saw maybe he bought some students too. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Not kids. They're seasoned architects and interior designers.
And they have the new innovative fresh ideas. That's good. Thank you for being here.
So, let me... We'll go project by project. And I'll move pretty quickly, and we can... I can answer questions along the way, or we can hold a Q&amp;A at the end. The Emergency Services Training Center, which is out at the old airport, many of you familiar with. This is the entrance drive. This is the current administration building, parking area, series of pre-engineered metal buildings. The old terminal's here. The fire tower is here. The burn tower with this sort of a practice service court. What we're proposing is, this is the building around 8,000 square feet with 40 parking spaces new that fits in with this sort of collection of buildings. This is designed as a pre-engineered metal building, which is in keeping with what you have out here right now. This is a view as you're coming in the entrance drive. The main entrance here, this is a staff entrance. This would be the main entrance here, the staff entrance here. We have two large classrooms, some office space, mechanical service, public restroom area. We have two large locker shower rooms, as well as a workout room and a mat room and training room. So that's around 8,000 square feet. This project currently has been... This construction documents phase of the project, they have been submitted to state construction or awaiting comments. Expecting those back relatively soon. This project is the project furthest along in design. In terms of schedule, we are scheduled to be out to bid in July. Start construction in September of '16 and end construction in May of 2017. Veterinary Medical Technology, this is in the construction documents phase. We're expecting a first submission to state construction in a couple of weeks, two or three weeks. This is an aerial view of the campus, of this section of the campus. Kelly Drive is about here. This is existing parking lot. This is Joyner Hall, courtyard of the existing courtyard with buildings flanking this. Right now, this is the existing dog kennel and cat ward. And right now, this is the proposed 13,000, roughly 13,600 square feet addition on two floors. Right now, this is an existing parking lot, so we're plugging the... Sort of plugging the gap in this courtyard and reinforcing this courtyard. We think it'll be much nicer. The parking we're displacing, we're relocating along the existing service drive of the campus. We have a dog exercise area in between the new building and Joyner Hall and pedestrian access from parking back into the interior of the campus itself. In terms of elevation, the way the building looks, this is looking from that student courtyard, looking at the building. The first floor, we have a new large dog kennel and cat ward, two stair towers either in elevator, some admin areas. And on the second floor, we have labs and classroom spaces. That would be this... This end right here is what you're looking at, that elevation, looking into one of those spaces. Again, this is the existing kennel. This is Joyner Hall. This is where... This is the size of the addition with the new parking that I mentioned. In terms of schedule, we are set to have CDs complete in July, out to bid in September 2016. A scheduled start of construction in October 2016 with a scheduled completion date of November 2017. We have a series of renovation projects. This is an aerial of the campus right now with Kelly Drive here, the front parking lots here. And we have sort of a series of small renovations scattered throughout the campus. The two largest being in Hockaday, new Student Union area and moving the bookstore, capturing the current bookstore space, which is moving to the Health Sciences Building. Campus security, we have a welding and robotics lab in Joyner Hall that comprise the base bid of the project. And then a series of other smaller renovations, which we have listed as add alternates. This is just... This is a plan of the new Student Union and Registrar's Office, which is moving up from the lower floor, the basement area of Hockaday. This is Hockaday. This is the largest renovation. This is the footprint of Hockaday, and that's the area that we're... The gray area is what we're renovating. And again, the bookstore is here, which is moving out to the new Health Sciences Building across Kelly Drive. In terms of schedule, we've been approved through design development. We're currently in the construction documents phase with a scheduled submittal to state construction in September of this year, scheduled to be out to bid in October of this year. Start construction is scheduled December of this year with an October 2018 completion date. The Dennis A. Wicker Center addition and renovation. This is the current aerial view of the site at large with the main campus on this side. This is Kelly Drive. This is the Wicker Center. And this is the land that the college owns with the drainage swale going through. And this is the area of development we're going to talk about. This is the approved master plan through the college board of trustees with a series of future buildings. This is the current location of Kelly Drive, which will be cut off at some point in the future when this loop drive is built. This shows the location as designed by DOT. And so, we're developing this part of it right now with this being about a 10,000 square foot heated addition to the building with a covered exterior breezeway between the existing building and the new. And we have a series of renovations in the existing building itself planned. But this is a... We've come back to this with Health Sciences, but this is a good slide to understand the long-term development of the site and the long-term loop drive that's going to be important to making this campus be unified, because right now Kelly Drive is sort of the... It just cuts it in half.
You say we get off of Kelly Drive if you were headed toward the Civic Center. You get off of Kelly and get on the new loop road at some point?
Right here. Right...
No, on the other?
Right here, yes. There's a roundabout right here. This is coming in from the bypass. DOT has a roundabout here, which the loop drive takes off around the perimeter of the site here, comes back into Nash Street. And that's going to allow this yellow line, which is current Kelly Drive, to go away.
It would be cut off at the driveway that goes down by the ATM.
Right. It comes in. We're going to maintain this new looped entrance to the... This will be a sort of a new main entrance to this side of the campus or the complex. So this will remain, and it'll be cut off somewhere, I think, around here. We'll be able to get into the existing parking.
Will you be able to access that loop anywhere else other than the roundabout and existing coming in on the end where... Will you be able to get in on that loop anywhere?
You'll be able to get into these parking lots. And you can see, this is a new future courtyard with buildings. So you'll come in, and the loop drive takes off. You'll be able to get in this parking lot, and you'll be able to get in this parking lot. So really, this is the portion.
Can you exit outside of that anywhere?
Civic Center parking lot?
Yeah, you can exit to Nash here, and you'll still be able to exit where you exit now. The Civic Center exits don't really change. Right.
You say, can you access the new parking lot from the existing parking lot? You'd be able to access the new parking lot from the existing parking lot?
That one right there.
Yes. What we're doing, we're displacing a lot of that parking that's on this side of the Wicker Center. And so, this is all going to be new parking. So you won't be able to go from this parking lot to this parking lot, because we have a grassed area that will be used for events. But you will either... If you come in Kelly Drive, you'll have to stay with the... In this parking lot. If you come off Nash, you'll be contained to this parking lot. So they don't... You can't connect between the two.
Whereas if you come in from Nash Street and you go into the parking lot that's there now, you won't be able to access the new parking lot from Nash Street.
Right. Right. There's a...
I just thought maybe, you know, people a lot of times, I go over there, I cut through.
Well, one of the important things in programming is that we want to have this nice lawn area that can be used for rentable space. And we have a series of glass... This is a gallery with an exit out to be able to access this space. And we have a future clock tower, sort of icon of the new campus on access. So right now, there's no vehicular access between those two. This is an aerial perspective view showing the existing building. Here's Nash Street. Kelly Drive is over here. This is the new building with the covered breezeway plaza between the two. And here is that new, you know, new configured, newly configured parking lot over here with that grassed, rentable space, looking out to the clock tower and Health Sciences Building. This just gets... Sort of gives you a view, an idea of the massing. One thing... One of the main programmatic elements is we have a culinary arts kitchen, which is thought of as the sort of one of the focuses of the building. So we have a lot of glass to where you'll be able to see in, especially at night, and see this being sort of a live, alive and active workspace, highlighting one of the main departments at the college. In terms of view, this is looking about from Kelly Drive now, looking back. There's the existing building. This is that culinary arts portion that I talked about. This is a series... This is a gallery space with breakout rooms behind it, looking out onto the new, newly or the future campus as it develops. In terms of the floor plan, this is the culinary arts kitchen. You come through... This is the existing building. This is the covered breezeway, the lobby extension into a large lobby here. And you turn and come down this public circulation space with an entrance on this side as well. So we have public restrooms, kitchen. We have a small kitchen in the back. And we have a service corridor here. So we have a public corridor, service corridor, backup house items, separate the two, mechanical space. And you can see here, here's a little more zoomed in. Here is the existing building with the addition, future clock tower on access with the long new parking. This is actually the proposed location for the Health Sciences Building. So these... You can see the proximity of these are really close. Here's Kelly Drive. So these... You can see these projects are going to be in pretty close proximity to each other, which is something I'll talk to you more about in just a second. In terms of schedule, we have CDs. We're currently in the construction documents phase, and we have an October 2016 CD completion date. We'll be out to bid November 2016. Start of construction, January 2017, with a construction completion, March 2018. Okay. Back to this slide. Really want to talk about the Health Sciences Building. This is in the design development phase. We're catching this project up since the addition of the dental program. We have had to move the site. Originally, the building was planned for this location, but we had a soils report. Very poor soils there was going to add a lot to the construction cost. So we have recommended, and the board has approved relocating the building to this area. We've had some preliminary soil borings that show better soils. It helps with utilities. There's just a lot of... There's a lot of pluses to moving it beyond the soils themselves, which are adding a tremendous amount to the budget to keep it in that location. So this is the current location. The current proposal is to build about 600 feet of this entrance drive, or this loop road actually, that will serve as the entrance drive to the Health Sciences Building. So we would come in off Nash Street, so you would have its own entrance. The public will be coming here due to the dental. So we'll cut the road off somewhere around here, and that would leave this remaining portion of the loop drive to be built. So we would have to design and build that certainly to DOT standards. The assumption would be they would take it over at some point in the future. This is about 30,000 square feet on two floors. The bookstore, as I said, moving from Hockaday is about somewhere in the vicinity, plus or minus 3,000 square feet on the first floor. We have a series of administration and Health Sciences areas. We have a stair tower either end with an elevator connecting the floors on the second level, series of administration, the dental suite itself with all of the dental stations, a series of simulation, Health Science areas. Again, 30,000 square feet on two floors. In terms of the schedule for this building, I'll show you a picture. This is the current proposal for the exterior appearance of the building. And this would be looking from the Wicker Center. And here's a view. It's a good view to see. This is looking... This is really Kelly Drive now, this little gray area. So you're looking back across the existing. There's the addition to the Wicker Center. Here's that grass lawn. This is an idea of a future clock tower on access with the breakout rooms. And then back in the distance is the Health Sciences Building.
What floor will the dental program be?
Second floor. And we've gone through extensive programming with the school's administration and department heads on that, and feel like we have a workable solution that they're happy with. But that tells the story of that side of Kelly Drive. There's a lot that's going to happen. You can see the proximity of these two. What we're proposing, it was not originally proposed this way. We have recommended to the college that the Wicker Center project and the Health Sciences project be bid together as one project. We have ways of separating out the money between the two, that the contractor would have two separate pay apps, so the money can be tracked. We think that that's going to help with... We think it'll be a better price. We think you'll get better coverage from better contractors. We think it should help the schedule. We think it will eliminate some potential... One-site contractors is the way to go on these projects, on these two especially with the utilities. We have some shared utilities. And having it under one general contractor, we think is a smart move. The college has approved that recommendation and wanted to talk to you about it. And what you'll see here, here's the schedules I just taught you about. The Health Sciences at the bottom, the Wicker Center, the Health Sciences in red. We have shown those tracking together. And what that meant was we... The Wicker Center took a little bit, like a month delay from where we were, and the Health Sciences got sped up a month or two to make them track together, to be able to be bid together. So you can see a start of construction in January with an end of construction in March... January 2017 and construction, March 2018. So a lot of moving parts, but we're on schedule and feel like we've corralled these to a point where they're making sense, and we think we're in good standing. We're making our deadlines, and state construction has been very good about their review and response times. And we... So we've been working our way through state construction steadily and feel good about where we are. So that is my presentation today. Can I answer any questions that you may have?
Give us an anticipated date for advertising for bids.
Advertise? Well, for out... When you see out to bid, we would anticipate advertising a week or two before that. So if you've got ESTC, we would be advertising probably in July. Veterinary Medical Technology sometime in September. Interior renovation sometime in October. Wicker Center and Health Sciences Building advertise November of this year.
November this year.
For a bid, you know, we would have a bid in December. Those would be bid in December. So we go out to bid, and that bid period's typically one month before you open the bids.
Or any glitches?
That's right.
When do you anticipate the completion date on all the projects?
The latest would be October of 2018, because the renovations are dependent on these other buildings getting built first. But anywhere between May 2017 and October of 2018. So they fall on that end date is the anticipated completion date. And that's assuming we get good contractors and things, you know...
Things move along.
Things move along the way they should. But that's the current anticipated schedule.
Taylor? Just a quick question.
Yes.
On the Civic Center addition, the three breakout rooms, are those walls movable to make it one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They are. These... I assume you're talking about these two?
Right. Yes.
They are. What we have is when they're closed, they're sort of seminar seating for about 50.
Okay.
And then you can open the... See these little closets?
Right. Right.
They stack into there, and you can have one large space.
Okay. So very similar to the design in the current Civic Center.
That's right. And then the... And we don't have the renovation shown, but we are opening up one of those... The existing classrooms, one's computer lab. We're going to renovate in there to have more meeting spaces there.
Oh, okay.
So that's sort of thought of. Mr. Foster thinks of that as the fourth breakout room.
Okay. Okay. And then, when we were talking about the Health Sciences Building, just a clarification for me, did you say as part of the entrance, that includes 600 feet of road frontage? You'll actually have a paved section to DOT standards?
That's going to... That is... We're going to... Where is that site plan? Sorry.
No, I really should have called you when you were there.
Yeah. That's going to be bid as an alternate. We're designing it to... We're going to get a price. Otherwise, you know, we're going to have to modify some off of Nash Street, make an entrance through here, but that's... Street, make an entrance through here, but that's not ideal because it really needs its own entrance, especially with the public coming. So, this, this is currently being designed. It will be bid as an alternate to just know exactly what it costs. But yes, that is, that is in design right now. So, about plus or minus 600 feet of, of that loop drive.
And I will get into that on another topic, but you know, that's one of our concerns
Oh, yeah.
as well, is eventually having that road and not having to tear down something that you just built.
And we're, and we're thinking of that. We would, we would design, we would, our civil engineer, I'm sure, would coordinate with DOT on, this is what we're doing, so they're, they're made aware of our decisions and have time to comment and coordinate that.
And this may be a question for Dr. Martin, but with the, with the Vet Med Tech going from October 16 to November 17, how's that gonna impact the students there? Is it gonna have much of a?
Yeah, we've been able to arrange it so that, that their experience just will be basically the same.
Okay.
We may have to move the animals for a short period of time.
Okay. Oh, that's already, all the Ts are crossed and I thought it on. Thanks, thanks, just.
All right, between the next nine to 12 months, lots of ribbon cuttings, lots of grand open.
That sounds like a good thing.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you for that.
I have one question. Uh, probably Philip can just say yes or no from back there, but are you still doing, planning on doing the roof projects this summer?
They're under construction right now.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Would, would you check with your board of trustees if, or maybe you already know, when you start to relocate from the Wicker site, going after the Innovation Center with the community program, do you know if anyone's had any discussion with the coach about transportation for getting to and fro?
We have not, because we, we've just basically presented to the board of trustees our conception of where those two pods will go out there. That is on the list that we will need to do. They've always been very accommodating in the past, so I don't anticipate there would be any problem with that. But the short answer is no, we have not yet.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Okay, um, the presentation of FY 2016-17 Lee County Fire District, Fire District Budgets, Donald Andrews. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, commissioners come for you this evening with the recommendations of the Lee County Fire Advisory Board. The commissioners have charged the Fire Advisory Board with a task of reviewing the budget requests from the county volunteer fire departments. You should have a copy of those recommendations from the Fire Advisory Board in your packet, but if you'll allow me, I'll take a moment to hit some of the highlights in the recommendation. This year was a challenging year. We had some changes in the fund balance and created some, some situations that some tough decisions had to be made. As is customary, the Fire Advisory Board met with representatives from each of the fire departments and we discussed our concerns with their budget. So, if you'll let me start, I'll start with Cape Fear Fire Department. Their budget increased by about $5,800, but they had over $12 million growth in their tax base. So, the growth allowed them to increase their budget slightly and maintain their current tax rate of 10 cents. Carolina Trace Fire Department increased by $26,473. They had about $4 million growth in their tax base, but they, their fund balance dropped by about $9,900 from the previous year. And as I noted in the recommendation, the members of the Fire Advisory Board expressed our concerns with the department's budget increases every year. Their budget has a significant increase and we met with several representatives of the board and their treasurer and were reassured by their board that the community is content with the increases, understand what's needed. They have made a lot of changes out at Carolina Trace. They added, in addition to the building, have upgraded the equipment, so a lot's been going on over there in the last few years. So, with that said, their tax for 2016, 2017 will increase to .097.
Is that, Mayor Andrews, is that because of the?
Well, they increased their budget by 26,000. Their fund balance dropped by 9,900. They only had growth of 4 million, so you put all that together, it resulted in a tax increase. I think their rate right now is 9.1? 9.1. So, those combination of increasing their budget by 26,000, their fund balance dropping by 9,900 and only having about $4 million in growth resulted in their taxing rate going up. And we addressed that concern with them and actually they had members of their board meet with us. And their board is made up of all citizens. There's no firemen on their board. They, yeah, seem to be content. Yeah, reassure us that the community understands what's going on over there, so. Deep River Fire Department budget increased by $10,013. They had about 8 million in growth. However, their fund balance dropped by $14,000. As a result, they were looking at a projected tax rate of 1.13.1 or 13.1 cents. When we met with Chief Kelly, his board had instructed him that they did not want a tax increase. So, they came back and cut $14,000 out of their budget to maintain their current rate of 12 and a half cents. You know, the Fire Advisory Board has concerns there. They cut their budget quite often to keep the rate going up. They have an aging fleet of trucks that they're piecemealing together. We also understand that possibly within the next year, they will lose several parcels of land, so their tax base would shrink possibly through annexation. So, we struggle back and forth, but we respected the request of their board of directors and recommended that they be allowed to cut their budget as requested to maintain their current rate of 12 and a half cents.
Is that jeopardizing our safety or an emergency?
No, they took it out of fund reserves. So, what it does is their need to replace a truck gets pushed back by another year. You know, I guess the, the thought is that growth at the airport maybe will, you know, once these new hangars come online, it'll help some. My concern is the annexation may offset any growth that's at the airport. So, it's one of these things we'll have to see. But, you know, they wanted, they're really set on maintaining their, their tax rate and not seeing an increase. So, they took the 14,000 out of their reserves that they had put in there. Moving on to Lemon Springs Fire Department, their budget increased by $3,235. Their tax base grew by 7 million. Yeah, I don't know what to say about Chief Cable and the board out there. They just do an outstanding job. They really do a great job. They have, you know, a large area. They are the busiest fire department in the county. They respond to more calls than anybody else. But with slight increase in the growth, their budget tax rates could remain at 9.6. Northview Fire Department, they did not change their budget from last year, remained the same as it is now. And for the first time in a few years, they actually saw an increase in their tax base of about $11 million. The downside, they lost about $18,000 in their fund balance. The projected rate was to increase slightly to .088, but same thing, Northview come back and cut about $4,700 out of their budget. They took it out of fund reserves to keep the rate staying at 8.7, so there's no increase in their tax rate there. And we understand that possibly a couple solo farms may be coming online in the next year, which will help them a little bit. Northwest Pocket Fire Department did not increase their budget over last year. They had about $3 million growth in the tax base. They got hit hard with the fund balance. They lost $32,500 dropping their fund balance. Their projected tax rate's gonna be 14 and a half cents. We met with Chief Poole and several members of the board of directors out at Northwest Pocket, went through their budget line by line, tried to find somewhere. They would have to cut $28,000 out of their existing budget to maintain their current rate. There's nowhere to cut 28,000 unless you eliminate one of the paid person during the week, which then creates another situation. We don't have staff to respond to a call, which I think is putting us in real jeopardy, 'cause then you have one person looking after two stations. He can get one truck out, but when he gets there, yeah, so. After a lot of conversations and discussions with their board and their chief, we felt that the 14 and a half cent, nobody wants to see their, their rates go up, but there's nowhere to cut their budget and maintain the same level of service that they're providing now. So, the Fire Advisory Board recommended to them and they reluctantly agreed that we leave their budget as is. Tramway Fire Department.
They're asking for an increase.
They're not asking for, they didn't increase their budget.
Yeah, I know.
Their loss of fund balance is impacting their tax rate.
Right.
When you lose $32,000 in your fund balance in the previous year, to maintain that rate, you might have to cut 28. If you go through their budget, there's really, they don't have but $4,000 in capital reserves this year. That's what was in there before. If you look at, the only place to cut would be personnel, but I think that opens the door for other, other potential problems that would be more detrimental than a 14 and a half cent. And like I said, they're not happy with it, but they can't control fund balance. They can't control collection rate or the tax base at this time. I mean, this, it's.
The only thing I'm looking at is that, you know, tops 15 and they're, they're right there at the top. They need to be looking at something else.
And I'm gonna address that here shortly. A few options. Tramway Fire Department, budget increased by $23,975. Significant increase, but they had $16 million growth in their tax base. They're the beneficiary of the solo farm over on Garden Street. So, yeah, we were trying to figure out where the growth was when we got the budget and got the numbers and we're like, everybody's focused on Tramway, the retail section there in the, in the Tramway area, but after doing a little bit of legwork, realized it was the solo farm that has come online. So, they were able to handle their increase in their budget and maintain their current rate, so there's no change in their rate. So, if you look at the total cost for the fire service, it increased by about $62,000, which it also includes the fire marshal's office. So, Fire Advisory Board is making the recommendation that these budgets be approved as adjusted with Northview and Deep River. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about the budget. And I got another subject I wanna cover before I get dismissed from up here.
Cover your other subject first.
So, um, the following is coming from me. It's not the Fire Advisory Board or the Chair Advisory Board. It is that for the last, I guess, eight years Doc was on the board, we've talked about a unified or a flat tax for fire service in Lee County. The reason I bring it up tonight is we really need to find a better or more equitable way to fund the fire departments. As I was trying to prepare my comments for this evening, kept racking my brain, trying to figure out how we can do a better job than what we're doing. We have two departments, Deep River and Northwest Pocket, that are struggling financially. I mean, we asked them to provide the same level of service that the other five do, but they have the two smallest tax bases in the county. They do an outstanding job with the funds they have. Yeah, no, no qualms with the service they provided, do an outstanding job. It's just they're facing challenges. I don't really see a lot of growth in the Northwest Pocket area. In Deep River, the airport may be down the road. I don't know. The proposed annexation obviously is gonna, you know, impact them. They're cutting $14,000 out of their budget to keep the rate from going up. Northwest Pocket didn't change their budget. Anyhow, so, you know, the flat tax or the unified tax would possibly be an alternative. So, if you look at the total cost for the fire service in Lee County without the cuts made by Deep River or Northview and include the cost of the fire marshal's office in 2016, 2017, it would be 2,728,164. The Fire District have a tax base of 2,566,326,416. So, if you run the calculations, this year would take 10.7 cents to fund the fire marshal's office and the seven fire departments. That's just this year now, okay? Don't get in your mind that 10.7 is the magic number. It's not. But if you look at Northview's at 8.7, we got Northwest Pocket fixing to go to 14 and a half cents. We haven't even talked about Clearwater folks who are paying 18.7. Their rate's not changing this year, even though it was an increase in the contract. We need to explore some options. The Fire Advisory Board has talked about this, but I think what I'm asking you guys and I'm not asking for an answer, is to put that there for thought. What is this board's feelings on exploring the possibility of some sort of flat tax or some sort of alternative? So, I hope you'll think about that and maybe some point, 'cause it'll take a while to implement something. And a flat tax comes a lot of strings, 'cause you're pooling all the money. You gotta figure out who's gonna be responsible for dividing it up? Who's gonna say, yes, you get the truck this year? No, you gotta wait two years. So, there's a lot of strings and you don't have the staff and the fire marshal's office or the finance department to do it, so a lot of thoughts can be put into it. But I wanted to toss that out there and hopefully get the discussion.
I have a quick question. Are there other counties that have a flat tax that you're familiar with in the state?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, there's some other, I mean, there's some counties we can talk to and, okay.
Like I said, there may be a better alternative out there. I don't know, but just when I'm looking at one district paying 14 and a half cents, one district paying 8 and a 7, and they're next door to each other. Yeah, it's, it's a challenge.
My thought is a fair way to do it, because all the citizens pay the same thing for fire protection, they're paying the same rate. So, I always thought it was a fair thing, even when I was on fire.
And when, like I said, we've talked about it, just, you know, kept, well, the timing's not right, the timing's not right. I don't know that the time is ever gonna be right to make a change, yeah.
Chatham and Moore be a comparison, or could that be something that you could put in equation?
We could, we could find out who has flat tax in the area. That wouldn't take long for us to find that. We could do the legwork. We're looking, you know, this doesn't solve the problem this year. I'm thinking going forward next year to having, if we wanted to go this route, it would take a year to do all the legwork.
Could you?
I'm not doing that and letting us know how it's worked out.
We can.
That's what I was gonna ask, same thing Doc asked.
What the other, surrounding counties are doing?
See what they're doing in.
Yeah, 'cause I know they do a combination. I think Hornet County has a fire tax and an EMS tax.
I like that ask, that you allow each of the Fire District Chiefs to engage this board about how they feel for their units. Not send it to the fire marshal, but send it, their positions to this board so that we might get a look at it. And I'd rather know where we are locally before we get too far out there. That's just my personal opinion.
Just getting them to weigh in with our board.
They're gonna be involved.
And they've been involved in our, our discussions, yes. And there's, there's some mixed feelings. I mean, you know, obviously if you're a well-funded district, you know, it's, um.
We've heard it discussed many times. I know you have and I have too and.
And I have too, but if we're gonna start looking at it, let's get a foundation here about our local folks first.
And we, I think this is something we would be glad to set up maybe a joint meeting with the Fire Chiefs Council and the commissioners or, I know y'all gonna have.
I don't need a meeting.
Y'all need a meeting, okay. Well, we can solicit the feedback.
In writing.
Okay.
Here's how we feel. Here's what.
We, I think we can solicit that from the fire departments and have it sent to the county manager directly to distribute it to you guys. Don't see that being a challenge.
And I'll meet with anybody.
You know, the only concern, I just wanna keep people in mind is when you have a flat, everybody's gonna, like you said, fight for those funds and so everybody's gonna put appropriations in, where prior they've been working on keeping appropriations down and, hey, look at us, we're trying to be smart with our money. Everybody tries to go after it. That's a little different.
It opens a whole different can of worms that a, the fire marshal's office, like I said, is not staffed to handle, nor is the Fire Advisory Board as it's currently configured, because someone has got to make decisions, so you, like I said, there's a lot of elements there.
That's the point. Somebody's gotta make the call.
Somebody's gotta make the call, yeah.
That's where you, that's where your question's coming.
Because, you're right. They, they, you know, the departments that are struggling right now do a great job with their funds. Just because all of a sudden, you know, everybody's paying 11 cents or whatever and you got this pool of money, if you're not managing it, then we're in no better shape two years from now than we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to schedule a public hearing on 6:00 PM, June 6th, 2017, to consider the next rates for the fireway.
Any discussion, questions? Hold those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, our next item, it, I think we can do it in ten minutes.
Certainly try.
Okay, is the resolution endorsing ranking of TarPO projects to N C D O T? Mr. Downey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Apologize, first of all, I'm fighting a little bit of a head cold. As you said, Madam Chair, actually, this is not anything we're actually asking you to take action on. This is just information and wanted to bring it to the board at the request of some of the actions that we've taken. I'll briefly try to go through the memo. I know we have ten minutes, so I'll try to be quick. Most of you are familiar with the Strategic Transportation Initiative, or Investment Program, rather, that D O T recently adopted about two years ago through statutory, through, um, basically major overhaul to the way that they score projects and award points, et cetera. In doing this, the intent was really to establish a new way of allocating revenues based on, and you'll see in that first paragraph, I have data-driven scoring and local input with emphasis on basically trying to get a much more objective way of scoring projects and less subjective, if you will. I will leave the commentary to whether how successful that's been, but, um, that is the intent anyway. Basically, under this new mobility formula, um, D O T looks to our Regional Transportation Planning Organization. You may recall, we've talked about in the past, TarPO or Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization. That is essentially our local participation through the D O T transportation planning process. Uh, this consists of four, the unincorporated areas of four counties, Moore County, Lee County, Chatham County, as well as parts of the unincorporated area of Orange County, as well as the municipality municipalities therein for Chatham, Lee, and Moore County. Um, so quite, quite a few jurisdictions participate in TarPO. Um, when we, when we submitted through this latest round of scoring, there were a total of forty projects, if you will, give or take, from all four jurisdictions and all the municipalities therein. Um, we were asked basically to trim that down to fourteen projects out of that original list of forty. Um, and then that would be, local points would be awarded by, or through, forwarded, and forwarded, excuse me, to D O T. Please note that, um, that each of the four counties is guaranteed at least two projects to be included in that group of fourteen. So, out of that fourteen, there's eight that are more or less assigned with two each in each county. So, that really leaves about six to kind of be spread among the four in terms of the additional projects. Excuse me. Uh, under this S T I process, D O T had a preliminary scoring of all the proposed projects. Note that Lee County had a total of fifteen projects scored. You do have a list in front of you, might be a little hard to read, and I have some larger ones if you need it. But there is, there's a, there's kind of a spreadsheet you have that's, that is larger in nature. And then there's one that has smaller that says D O T scoring on it. Um, that is the project, that is the information that was sent to us locally. So, the D O T list was what we had, and we started making our decisions based off of what D O T had preliminarily scored on, which is that spreadsheet is smaller in nature and is a little difficult to read. Um, so with that information in mind, we distributed, we received that information in mid-April. Uh, we distributed that information out to our Ad-Hoc Transportation Committee, which includes Chair Downerple, as well as, yes, Mayor Andrews is still here as well, as well as Mayor Mann from the city of Sanford, as well as the managers are certainly invited to attend that as well, and myself, and Mr. Montgomery, who is our senior planner and kind of our transportation planning project manager. We met, uh, very quickly on the afternoon of the twenty-seventh with the intent to try to get some idea of how we would rank these, to get some preliminary input, if you will, on taking the fifteen projects that were scored on that list from D O T, and trying to get some idea of how we would rank those and make a recommendation to the Joint Planning Commission, which I'll talk about in a minute. Um, we did that, um, and if you flip over to the next page of my memo, uh, we took that information, uh, from Madam Chair Downerple, Mayor Andrews, and Mayor Mann. And we took that information and we kind of used that as a basis of discussion for the, the next evening, which was the twenty-eighth, where we met with the full, full Joint Planning Commission. Um, and of course, if you recall, we have nine members on that, um, which of course is the same, uh, three primary elected officials as well, as two additional, or an additional elected official from each jurisdiction, in the case of the county. Ms. Commissioner Sloan represents Lee County along with Chair Downerple. And then your Planning Board Chair, Kathy Waddell, also representative of the county. Same equivalent representation for the city and the town of Broadway. So, having said that, we took that preliminary list that was scored by the Ad-Hoc Transportation Committee. We put that information in front of this group, this larger group, which was actually the group that was gonna make the final recommendation to D O T and to TarPO. Um, the only real change that came out of it, and it really kind of ties into your presentation you had earlier this evening, when you were talking about the Loop Road around Kelly Drive and the intent of the college. The original, there was a lot of discussion, quite honestly, back and forth about keeping that project number one, the Loop around Kelly. Originally, um, and when, and part of the reason there was, there was a major issue there is the scoring of that project was not very high. And so, there was some concern about if we ranked it number one, are we wasting our points? Because it's not scoring very well. The flipside argument of that was, yeah, but we really want this project, and we really think it's important, so we really ought to make a statement and put this project number one. Ultimately, however, um, what happened is when we went through the further discussion, because the, the Ad-Hoc Committee had ranked that number one and had put that at the top of the list. But when we met with the full Joint Planning Commission, um, it was decided based on further discussion that the project, the cost of that project was relatively low. And it was only, I believe it's two points eight million, is that what you think? Two point four, excuse me, two point four million. And that, because of that, and the fact that any project that would make this list, you're looking at least twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two before it would even begin construction. And the timing of all the moving parts of this, it was gonna happen much sooner. And it felt like that there was certainly, there would be a way of local monies, or, or the funds would be found locally and not, the emphasis shouldn't be making this number one on this list. That it was essentially the timing of the project and the cost was relatively cheap speaking, that it would be more important to probably move that off the list and move all the other items up the list. And so, essentially, that's what you see, and, uh, the larger spreadsheet that you have in front of you, um, that's the final ranking in terms of the local projects, ultimately that came out of the Joint Planning Commission. And that is what was in, and that has since been forwarded on to TarPO for scoring. And ultimately, that will be forwarded on to, uh, D O T for their final scoring process. And I'll pause there.
That was great. Take a breath.
Well, which priority list would the Loop Road be put on to get the funding?
Well, it actually, we didn't put it on there, Doc, again, because I think that what came out of the group was it felt like because the amount was so low, that it would be a better, um, maybe I'm not using right word. Instead of relying on that scoring process and kind of waiting on that six-year process to kind of get on the queue, so to speak, for, for funding, it'd probably be better to pursue other means to get the funding for that, whether...
I know that at one time, the division had a policy where they would let a project through to the division up to a certain amount of money. I don't know what that amount's been moved to now. It used to be a million dollar limit, but they may have changed that. That's been ten, fifteen years ago. I just wonder if it, what the chance would be of getting something like this on that.
I'm not sure. I, I, I think the discussion amongst the board that night was to pursue all kinds of avenues, whatever might be available outside of the...
I was just thinking about the two thousand and eighteen completion date on these buildings. It'd be nice to have that road, to have one of those buildings.
And I think that was one of the key things that was driving this discussion is, is the realization that even if this got on there, you know, you're looking at twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two before it's done, and, and, you know, the, the project itself is moving along at a much greater pace than that.
There wouldn't be a light way of buying a property there, or anything like that? Shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be, no, sir.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, this one quick question. I see on the small D O T score, one with the green on the side, the small one, not the...
Yes, sir.
Is this the same Globe Street that's located over in, down in Jonesville?
You're talking about the Woodland Avenue sidewalk project, I believe?
I guess I'm just baffled how that went ranked quite accidently at all. I mean, I, I don't get that, I don't understand that.
Well, part of that might be, and part of the challenge with this, and, and again, I'm not a transportation expert, so, so I'll say what I, what I, what I can answer to that, is you got bike and ped projects that are scored somewhat differently, a little bit, than the highway projects. And this is a bike and ped project, so you're looking at some of the criteria, I think, that they would use for that would be density, connectivity, um, certainly some of that would cross over, like safety issues, whether it's a highway project or a bike ped project. David, jump in here if I'm, if I'm wrong on anything I'm saying. He's a little bit more of an expert on this. But, um, so when you're looking at some of the scoring here, understand that the scoring, it's not an apples to apples, so to speak, from a highway project to a bike ped project.
I understand that, Matt.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little difficult to, to be honest with you, to, to, to try to figure out. When you're trying to rank, that's part of the challenge we have from a staff level, as well as working with the Joint Planning Commission, is, you know, a lot, one of the theories is, do you take your highway projects, because these are typically more expensive? They infect more people, and you kind of bump those up, even though they may not score as well?
And one of the things, Matt Day, who was the D O T person that met with us before we met with the Joint Planning Commission, you know, he explained to us, it's, they tried to make it simple and just made it even more complicated, you know, because you have the local, the division, and the regional buckets. Then you've got bike ped and roadway, and, you know, then you've got those buckets, and it just, it, it's like a crazy chess game.
And I believe this is, and I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I was gonna say, I believe this is the second time, David, that we've gone through this process?
Yes.
And each time it's tweaked, you know, every, as we've gone through it.
If you're on the bike to work, I'm okay with that. But we're talking about a two million dollar project that involves jobs in our community college system by virtue of a new outlet and jobs.
Absolutely.
And the state constantly talks about the lack of funding. But here's something they say, well, this is not...
Well, we, we made that argument to, and Mayor Andrews is back there, but, but when the two mayors and I met the day before with Mr. Day, you know, he, and, and we appreciated his candor, you know, because we asked him, you know, it scored very, very low. When you compared all the other projects that were looked at for our region and, and how they scored, it was, I mean, it just wasn't gonna get done. And, and we asked him about writing letters, and, you know, the college had already, you know, they're donating the land, so that takes money, or, you know, that makes the project even cheaper. Magnetti Morelli's been contacted about right away, you know, every, all the communication's been done, but we just can't get through that, that obstacle there at the state level, that it just doesn't fit in a box up there. And, and then, well, well, he, he reminded us that, yes, he reminded us that even if it got approved for, for this step, it, it still wouldn't be done till twenty-one or twenty-two. And his recommendation was, we try other avenues. And the governor's bond package passed, and part of that had the infrastructure dollars in it. So, you know, we might just need to go about funding it a different way, rather than going through the TarPO process. Does that, is that basically something?
I think that was more or less the summary of what came out of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Okay, one last question. How much does it cost to count and be involved in fireworks?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, I believe.
A year?
Annually, I believe it.
Alright, thank you.
That sounds great.
Yes.
We're all wrong.
Okay, we need to, we need to move and help them. Alright, we're gonna, um, suspend our, um, regular agenda and go into our public hearings since it's six o'clock. Everybody switches gears? Yes, sir. I'll show you. These were our fifteen right here. I mean, this is what we started with, and then it's hard to see that they're ranking one, two, they're in order. One, two, three, four, five, and then there's a more named... But come if you're going to vote, so we should get a chance to look at it.
I'm bored.
We'll figure it out.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, folks are looking for the sign-up sheet. There's no sign-up sheet for the public hearings.
Ladies and gentlemen, if, if, if you're leaving the sign-up sheet, we'll, we'll, you don't need to do that. We'll call up, you know, for and against, that's fine. Everybody gets a chance to speak, thank you.
Everyone must please take a seat. One, there's two up, and there's three up.
There's some seats up here. So, we've got three here. Okay, and, um, looks like we've got a full house this afternoon. Um, I, I guess, just in the sense of, uh, of cooperation, once we do your public hearing, maybe if you could move out, if there's some people in the hallway out there in the other room? No, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on into our public hearings. The first one being to conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to the official zoning map of Lee County per application by A G A Corporation. Ms. Thompson? Oh, I'm sorry. It is the budget first.
If you, if you wanna start with this, this is fine. I think most of the people are here for that, so if you wanna start with the land use first, it would probably clear people out.
Yeah, is that okay with everybody? Okay, okay. Go with my initial feeling.
Good evening, Chair, Board of Commissioners. A G A Corporation has filed an application to rezone approximately one point five, three acres of land located east of N C Highway eighty-seven south from residential restricted district to general commercial district. This property is situated north of the Carolina Trace Water Tower and was formally addressed as forty-nine fifty-three and forty-nine fifty-seven N C Highway eighty-seven south. The lot has over one hundred and thirty-five feet of road frontage on N C Highway eighty-seven, and it includes what, an existing point eight, four acre lot and a point seven, zero acre portion of an adjoining tract for a new lot boundary and combined acreage of one point five, three acres. All adjoining properties that are east of Highway eighty-seven south are zoned residential restricted district. Properties west of the site and then west of N C Highway eighty-seven south are zoned Barrington Park Conditional Zoning and residential restricted district. The Barrington Park Conditional Zoning includes residential uses as well as commercial uses. Land uses in the needed area are primarily residential, consisting of low-density, single-family dwellings, and farmland. A vacant forty acre wooded tract adjoins the site to the north, and other uses in the area includes Carolina Trace Volunteer Fire Department and Carolina Trace Golf Community. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property in anticipation of a future business use. The property was once used for non-residential use many years ago, and it has been vacant for some time. The residential restricted district is primarily established to provide areas for low-density, single-family uses. This district requires a minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet, a minimum lot width of one hundred feet, with building setbacks of thirty feet from a front property line and rear line, and fifteen feet from a sideline. The proposed general commercial district is established to provide areas for general commercial activities designed to serve the community, such as shopping centers, repair shops, wholesale businesses, and retail sales with limited outdoor display of goods. This district promotes a broad range of commercial operations and services necessary for large regions of the county, providing community balance. and services necessary for large regions of the county providing community balance. The C-two district should be located on or within proximity to a major thoroughfare. The C-two district requires a minimal building setback of ten feet. There is a zero side and rear yard setback, but of course you have buffers that will dictate that setback. There is no minimum lot size. We included with this agenda package a list of uses permitted in the general commercial district. The subject property does not appear to have access to public water and/or public sewer or any water source. And of course, development of the site will require a water source as well as a wastewater source. The two thousand seven Lee County Comprehensive Transportation Plan illustrates NC Highway eighty-seven south as an existing major thoroughfare. Major thoroughfares typically serve through travel and external travel into major industrial, commercial, recreational, and institutional attractions. The NC DOT two thousand thirteen traffic study reports twenty thousand vehicles per day north of the petition site. The subject property is not located within a water shed or a flood hazard area. The site is located along the major thoroughfares I mentioned before, and there are specific design standards for that thoroughfare. If this property is rezoned, all uses permitted on the C-two district list would be allowed, and any future development of the site will be required to meet current standards of the Unified Development Ordinance and any specific design standards. The two thousand twenty land use planning map did not identify properties east of NC Highway eighty-seven in this area of the petition area property. However, the plan designate properties west of the site within a highway overlay for retail commercial development. The Greenwood Small Area Plan places property in this area along NC Highway eighty-seven within a Greenwood Highway overlay with a retail commercial land use classification. The intent of this classification is to provide areas that are conducive to commercial operations where goods and services are sold on-site. The request to rezone this property from residential restricted district to general commercial district does not conform to the two thousand twenty land use plan, but it conforms to the Greenwood Small Area Plan. The relatively high traffic count, the lot fronting the major thoroughfare makes this site somewhat conducive to a non-residential use. In addition, the purple statement of the C-two district states that this district should be located within, on, or within proximity to a major thoroughfare. When considering the zoning of this property, current development trends of the neighborhood should be continued and applied.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, so now we'll begin the hearing to consider an amendment to the official zoning map of Lee County per application by AGA Corporation. Is there anyone that would like to speak for the rezoning? If you'll state your name and address when you come up for the record, please.
I'm Ben Gross. Uh, this site originally was Carolina Irrigations, and then after Carolina Trace was developed and it came, the Carolina Trace Maintenance Site, before they moved down a little further on eighty-seven, and then Sam Heel Green operated their, um, business there. It's certainly not a residential site within the shadow of the, of the, uh, water tower there. And so, feel like this is probably the best zoning part.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Is anybody on there? Okay, thank you. Okay, this hearing is closed, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is, um, amendment to official zoning map of Lee County per application by Copper Ridge Development LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Copper Ridge Development has filed an application to rezone a twenty-six acre portion of a thirty-eight acre tract of land owned by Mr. John Marvin Thomas and located at the southeast corner of Rock Sullivan Road and Farrell Road from residential agricultural district to residential restricted district. The subject property has two points of access with over one hundred and eighty-six feet of frontage on Farrell Road and over two hundred and forty feet of frontage on Rock Sullivan Road. The property is currently vacant and appears to have light wooded areas. All adjoining properties are zoned residential agricultural, and since the land uses in the area include single-family dwellings, farmland, and forest land. Mini Mobile Home Park is located east of the site off Rock Sullivan Road, and there are no other developments on that side of the road. All properties to the south includes an over eighty acre vacant tract. Copper Ridge Development, a residential subdivision, is located west of the site and west of Farrell Road. The applicant has expressed interest in rezoning this property in order to develop a residential single-family subdivision. At present, a subdivision may be developed on the property at a maximum density of one unit per acre. The residential restricted district allows a maximum density of one and a half units per acre. The residential agricultural district is established to provide areas for low-density, single-family uses, low-intensity agricultural operations, as well as agribusiness and supportive industrial and commercial uses. The residential restricted district is established to provide areas for low-density, single-family uses. Properties zoned residential restricted should only be allowed in areas that abut or are in close proximity to existing large lot, single-family developments, making the residential restricted an appropriate transition district between rural agricultural and suburban uses. Both districts have setbacks of thirty feet from a front property line, thirty from the rear, fifteen from the sides. The residential restricted district allows a minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet. The residential agricultural district allows a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. Another big difference in the two districts is that manufactured homes are allowed by right in the residential agricultural district, and they are not a permitted use in the residential restricted district. The subject property has access to public water, and if developed, will require onsite individual septic systems. The NC DOT two thousand fourteen traffic studies report five hundred forty vehicle trips per day north of the site on Farrell Road. The subject property is not located within a flood hazard area. It is located within the Cape Fear WS4 watershed conservation overlay, and if developed, will be required to meet those standards. The two thousand twenty land use planning map identifies this area within an industrial, commercial, and office classification. This classification is intended to designate areas which are suitable for industrial, commercial, and/or office use. The Deep River Small Area Planning Map identifies this area primarily within a light industrial classification, and the light industrial classification, again, is intended to contain manufacturing uses with minimal impacts on surrounding areas. The request to rezone this property from residential agricultural to residential restricted district do not conform to the two thousand twenty land use plan or the Deep River Small Area Plan. As noted, the plan, both plans place a non-residential classification over properties in this area due to its location to US Highway one, which is a major thoroughfare, and its proximity to separate Lee County Raleigh Executive Airport. Both residential districts, again, allow low-density, single-family uses as noted in the purple statement. When considering the zoning of this property, current development trends of the neighborhood should be continued and applied.
Any questions?
I've got one. And this is just for general information. As, as we get more and more development out in the rural areas, is there anything in place that addresses runoff? And these areas?
And these areas?
Erosion runoff, yeah.
Right, that is regulated by the state, uh, department, not the local.
Yeah, okay, not local, but, so you don't get into it at all?
No, if we receive a complaint, we call the state and let them know. You know, we get contact information, or we call the state and give them their names, and they will get into it.
Which division, and is that included in your information? Or when you send it out to, notice me? Well, we oughta probably start doing that so that we don't start collecting those kinds of concerns, because I received one already about, and I didn't know what to answer with it. So let me, Madam Chair, I will maybe make up part of our notice.
Our report, okay.
So people automatically know we call this, those, and those.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion? Don't need to, does everybody understand that? Any?
Just notice, that's all.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, um, we're open to public hearing to consider an amendment to the official zoning map of Lee County per application by Copper Ridge Development LLC. All the, anyone in favor that would like to speak?
I guess, I guess I get to do it again?
Let it be.
One trip and kill two for it or something.
There you go.
Uh, this property, it, it's not about increasing density as much as it is about better utilization of the land. Anytime you get attracted to land like this, you have some slopes and some, um, places where it runs off, and some places, dressed in Roberts, a concern. They, environmental people will make this put in some silt ponds, basins, to control that runoff. Sometimes they are permanent, uh, sometimes they're temporary. But that, of course, it's not a county function or our function. It has to be designed by the engineers and then, uh, and then maintained. Counties generally don't wanna get in maintaining those things. Doc can tell you that. But, you know, certainly after the developments are established, you know, the other part of Copper Ridge. Now, DFPs want us to fill up obligations because, you know, and that's what, they, they wanted to go away because, you know, as the development's finished and everything gets grassed. Those things are pretty well, uh, regulated. And we would hope that, you know, by having the ability to use some smaller lots and some bigger lots, we can have a little better utilization of the good soils. Any questions?
Mr. Gross, is there any concern here with the location near the airport and the noise?
You know, it's kinda interesting. We've got several pilots, they love, they love that. Uh, no, it's not a problem, and we're not in the flat path. Flat path runs along the railroad, and, uh, and so very seldom do you have anybody coming over.
It's different if they're coming over you, coming out of that flat.
Yeah, yeah, you were at the beginning and the end of the runway.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the petition? Okay. If you'd come forward and, well, the gentleman on the back row over here, I think, was the first one. Did it come in, raise your hand? Uh, raise your hand, feel like I'm teaching again. You've already raised your hand.
Madam Secretary, gentlemen, my name's Fred Sloan. I live at thirty-four twenty-nine Farrell Road, which is adjacent to Copper Ridge at present time. I've lived there my entire life, except for when I was in the military. I have a paper I'd like to read. Can I pass this out, please?
Pass it out, boy.
Yeah, we'll get it, boy.
Yeah, we get it, boy.
We'll just pass it.
Our area has always been a quiet rural area with most properties owned by families for generations. Keeping the land at RA will allow the amount of plots for homes to build at a minimum of point ninety-two, uh, an acre. This will allow progress in an area to remain within the atmosphere of the country setting. We value the safety of the area with being able to know our neighbors, ride bicycles, take walks along the highway. With keeping plots on this land at a larger size, this will keep the traffic flow at a minimum. All land plots shown on the map surrounding these properties are listed as RA. A rezoning of this block could set a precedent for future requests. Copper Ridge Development has been an addition that is in keeping with the quiet rural tone of our area as the plots are divided in almost an acre to an plot. Homes consistent in this price range with others being built around us. The development has caused some problems with the water flow on surrounding properties, mine especially, I have some erosion. And addressing Mr. Gross's silt fences, I haven't seen one yet around this property while it was being developed. There's a house right now being built, joining my property, it's probably twenty feet, and you can go out there tomorrow and look, there's no silt fences whatsoever. When it comes to hard rain, mud goes into the streams. One of the main concerns is, is between my house and Zion Church Road, if we have large rainfall for like two or three days, water will overflow the highway. The state DOT has been out there and filled up holes, you can check with it. So, uh, that's another problem. So far as housing, I'm all for development and improvements. But we have, uh, we've got the copper mine project, we have dough run, we have Neil Millings' development, we have, uh, the copper mine development. Fringe Village has always been there. And all of this is within like four miles of my house. So far as the airport's concerned, I am in the flat path. I have airplanes over my house continually. And if that's not bad enough, they work on them, there's garages through the woods where they work on airplanes, and you ought to hear them revving them up when they're working on. I think I've covered everything. But anyway, I am totally not in favor of this, this new development. I just don't believe we need it in that area. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Okay, let's see, gentleman here?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is James Teal, I live at thirty-six eighty-seven Farrell Road. The reason I came tonight is because, like my neighbor Fred has, has just brought forward, this development, basically according to the guidelines that are already in existence in Lee County, can go ahead and be developed as an RA. It really, I'm having chaired the Deep River Small Area Plan and been on the board, sort of with Doc Odom there for many years and many others, and chaired it. I, I questioned and couldn't understand the reason for requesting an RR, uh, rezoning. Okay, and tonight I come to you still questioning that, and would like y'all to please consider duly that there's, I don't know that it's needed, okay? I understand Mr. Gross's comment that he'd be better utilization of land, and that very well may be the case. Ultimately, the soils will end up dictating whether or not this soil... Ultimately, the soils will end up dictating whether or not this soil, if he can use, go to a thirty thousand square foot, uh, which is allowed under RR. But I think the biggest thing, to me, and, uh, living in the Deep River community and chairing that, uh, small area plan, uh, I went through many months with my neighbors and some who were not very much in favor of, of long-range planning. And so I had it brought to my personal attention, how they felt as we go forward. And I think the strongest thing that I, that I saw here is the fact, when you get down to, uh, on, I guess it's page two of two in the position, in the petition, where it clearly states that the RR district is not part of the, either of those plans, either the twenty-twenty plan or the Deep River plan. We do have a, uh, our roads are, are okay, but they're not, we don't need additional traffic, uh, even if you put a regular subdivision in there at RA at forty thousand square feet, it's not but a few lots. So from that standpoint, uh, I would, I would certainly request that y'all respectfully give the consideration not to, uh, to approve an RR on this particular petition.
Thank you, Mr. Teal.
Thank you. And, uh, John, by the way, what John said is exactly correct about the airport. Uh, you get used to it, but the flight plan does come right down Farrell Road. If you stop to think about it, and this is just basic one-on-one how they do, if you were driving your car and you're looking at the pilot sitting on the left-hand side, where's he looking at? The airport's right over there. He's using Farrell Road as his guide, comes around, makes his turn and comes in, okay? So the flight path is not over closer, it's further out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. Okay, anyone else to speak against? Okay, this public hearing is closed, thank you very much. Okay, um, the amendment to the official zoning map for application by Mr. Charles Brown, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Charles Brown has made an application to rezon his property at three oh four Country Estates Drive from Highway Commercial Conditioner Use District to Residential Agricultural District. In nineteen ninety-three, Mr. Brown was granted approval of petition to rezon six acres of land at three oh four Country Estates Drive from Residential Mix District to Highway Conditioner, Commercial Conditioner Use District in order to allow a beauty shop on his property with his residence. In two thousand one, Mr. Brown was granted approval to rezon a portion of that property to residential mix so that his daughter could build a house. All adjoining properties are zoned residential agricultural. The area is primarily agricultural uses and low-density single-family residence. Mr. Brown has stated that the beauty shop has been closed for some time and that he is seeking to refinance his property and wishes to rezon it for, to allow just the residential use. The Highway Commercial Conditioner Use District is for just the beauty shop and all of his residential activities there. The Residential Agricultural District would be a more appropriate district for single-family residential use and agricultural uses. The subject property is served by private well and public water or a private water source. The traffic council Country Estates Road is one hundred. The property is not in a flood hazard area, it is in the Deep River WS four protected watershed overlay district. The twenty-twenty land use plan did not identify a specific land use for this area of the subject property. Rezoning this property from Highway Commercial Conditioner Use District to Residential Agricultural District would conform to the area along Country Estates Drive and its existing development out there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing, um, to consider the amendment to the official zoning map of Lee County per application by Charles Brown. Anyone to speak in favor of this petition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Charles Brown, and, uh, the reason for this is financial purposes, about getting a house, refinancing stuff, and they needed to be residential in the area, and that's, that's basically the only reason we've been doing it, just for that.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone opposed to the petition? Okay, this public hearing's closed, thank you very much.
Can we excuse the planning board?
Yes. Yes, the, um, the planning board and any interested parties will be in the Wicker Room. Now we'll back up and I'll start again. We'll go back to A, um, let, let the planning board proceed. Um, we'll, um, begin the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year twenty sixteen-seventeen budget. Mr. Crumpton, you want to start it off?
Just to a quick summary, Madam Chair, at the May second meeting, I presented the two thousand sixteen-seventeen manager's recommended budget. Uh, the total budget is sixty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand and eighty-five dollars, maintains the existing tax rate at seventy-nine point five cents. Since our last meeting, uh, I've talked with three folks concerning the budget, Saga, Boys and Girls Club, and Dr. Bryan, so those have been my three phone calls and only phone calls. So I encouraged all to be here tonight to talk directly to the board.
All right. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year twenty sixteen-seventeen budget. Anyone speak in favor of the budget? Good evening.
Um, my name is Andy Bryan, Superintendent of Lee County Schools, live at fifteen oh eight Winlock Drive, Sanford. Um, on behalf of Lee County Board of Education and all the students and employees, I want to thank you for supporting us during the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year with a one percent increase in certified and classified supplements. I want to also thank you for the additional instruction on capital funding that you provided to support our students last year. This year, we're appreciative that County Manager Crumpton has included another one percent increase for certified and classified staff in the two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget to ensure that we are retaining and attracting the very best possible employees. As you know, finding the best teachers, employees grows more competitive each day. Our Human Resources Department has aggressively used this goal and your commitment over the past years of recruiting tools to attract new employees. The goal, of course, being for our Board of Education, uh, increasing to ten percent by seventeen-eighteen, our local supplement. Given this, I hope you'll give your full consideration to our budget request, and once again, we are very appreciative of your support as a board, as well as all the work we do together to help our community's children achieve success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Okay, anyone else to speak in favor of the budget? Okay, and opposition to the budget? Okay, I close the public hearing, thank you very much. Uh, would you like to make a comment?
You just want to make a comment.
Yeah, sure, sure, maybe I should have that as the third option, yes.
I didn't like either one of those options.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Understood, your welcome.
Uh, I'm Bob Joyce, uh, with Saga, I live at two thousand three Management Point, Sanford, North Carolina, uh, and on behalf of Joy, Thrash, and our board, I'd like to speak in support of our budget request submitted, uh, to the County Manager, Charlie Welborn, a member of our board, is here and he will also speak, so I'll, I'll try not to duplicate. We've tried to, uh, work together on this. Uh, our staff is working extremely hard to get our Economic Development and Chamber of Commerce divisions into high gear. Uh, our project responses this year, two thousand sixteen, are actually slightly ahead of last year. Uh, we have twenty-one projects, uh, responses this year versus sixteen last year. And there are three small projects which we believe will be announced in Lee County in the next sixty to ninety days. Expansions, though, continue to be a highlight for our community, and you can see, of course, from the help wanted ads that you see in the paper, that, uh, there are local jobs, good jobs at good wages, uh, available in our community, and we're, we're very pleased that our local industries continue to expand. We're working diligently to expand the products that we have to offer, both small sites, uh, twenty to fifty acres, and larger sites over a hundred acres. Uh, we have a very energetic team of private investors that has been formed to work on Central Carolina Enterprise Park, to develop these sites, along with help from local government, uh, which we think is a very good partnership and bodes well for our future. Uh, we are hoping that in two thousand sixteen-seventeen, we can develop at least one spec building that's on our to-do list. Uh, we hope to improve our product offering this way, and also increase traffic. Spec buildings usually serve to be a magnet for, uh, economic development prospects. On the Chamber side, we've improved attendance at all of our networking meetings, it's up almost twenty-five percent across the board. We've increased membership, Chamber staff and ambassador volunteers have made over three hundred visits with merchants and small business people in two thousand sixteen. Ribbon cuttings have increased, national retailers, Dunkin' Donuts and others, continue to see us as a viable market. Uh, we respond to requests from those people. The Chamber has launched a new small business support series called the Build Series, which we think helps small business people get some resources that they would not norm- normally get. Uh, marketing has been a very strong area for us, but one in which we are in need of more resources. Uh, we have improved and we continue to improve our website, we produce weekly and monthly e-blasts, we publish an annual report, we have vastly increased our social media presence, uh, including a blog, which is attracting an increasingly strong following. We partnered with Herald, uh, on the Go Sanford mobile app instead of creating one of our own, so I think we're trying to be a good shepherd of resources. We, uh, started increasing, uh, our inventory of marketing collateral pieces, uh, we, uh, produce those electronically and then print as needed instead of printing up supplies, uh, which has been helpful. We, uh, we are beginning to build a very strong photo library and, uh, and drone footage of our community, which we use in our marketing. We've developed an Economic Development Agricultural Committee, uh, Joy has met, uh, a number of times, uh, we're building statewide partnerships as well as national ones. The Vista Services Division, which you supported, uh, that part of our operation is actively under construction. And during the last six months, uh, during the midst of all this stuff, we packed up and moved, uh, no small feat for a small office. Uh, we also visited consultants, uh, this year in Atlanta, Chicago, Raleigh, and we even went to Wilson, North Carolina and visited some folks, and then, of course, we traveled to Germany, uh, to the world's largest advanced manufacturing trade show. We, uh, we, though, need to do more, more marketing outreach, we need to travel more, we need to get our message in more places in front of more decision-makers, and it's a job we can't accomplish without more resources. Uh, I think if the trip to Germany taught us one thing, it's that we need to be more active in outreach, it simply takes more resources to do that. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
My name is Charlie Welborn, uh, live at five twenty-three Chris Cole Road here in Sanford. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about our Sanford Area Growth Alliance and our upcoming budget for the next fiscal year. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, our Executive Director, Joy Thrash, requested in writing to the County Manager that the two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen funding from the county be increased to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Mr. Crumpton's recent budget proposal did not include any increase for Saga from the prior fiscal year. I think you all have got a handout, uh, that includes Ms. Thrash's letter and also Saga's most recent Comprehensive Economic Development Plan. Do you, do you all have that?
Yeah.
Or, I want to, John, if you would.
Saga has continued to develop and strengthen itself over the past year as it strives to implement and accomplish its program of work. As with any new organization, Saga did experience some growing pains, but has emerged as a strong group of professionals, working with local governments and business leaders to continue to have a strong Chamber of Commerce and a proactive economic development program. As an officer of the Chamber, I was part of the original group that studied the feasibility of merging the Chamber and the EDC. I assisted with the fundraising efforts for private investors and with the final merger and structure of what is now known as the Sanford Area Growth Alliance. I currently serve on the Executive Committee and as, as a treasurer. I tell you, I cannot express to you enough my appreciation for everyone's support in this endeavor, including the public and private investors, and the countless hours of work that has been invested by numerous key business leaders and government officials. We recognized a long time ago that we are at a crossroads in this community as it relates to economic development, and it has always been my opinion that failure in this project was not an option. After nearly three years, we have, we have momentum, we have key professionals in place, but we need to seize the moment, invest more, and work harder to seek greater success. The EDC world is ever-changing. During our completion of the Duke Energy Site Readiness Program nearly a year ago, the McCallum Sweeney Consulting Group reminded us that in general, success in landing a major project is not a short-term endeavor. It could take several years. However, it is imperative to make the necessary investments and continue a consistent program of marketing our community's assets. Our current staff has been very responsive to RFPs, has an active list of current projects, as Bob just mentioned. They have also been proactive in telling our story across the state into a national and international audience. I'm sure you've read in the Herald about the recent trip to Germany for the week-long international advanced manufacturing trade shows. In order to compete for new jobs, we have to have an aggressive, targeted, and consistent approach to marketing. Recently, we had a meeting with Harvey Smith from the Research Triangle Regional Partnership to discuss our membership in the partnership, and for him to get feedback on the value of our participation. Uh, Madam Chair, Dial Rimple was in attendance, and I think she would agree that we had a great and open conversation with Mr. Smith, we expressed some of our frustrations, but we focused more on how the surrounding communities could come together and work to create an environment that would be successful for all. Once again, it was obvious to all of us that we have to have an aggressive, targeted, consistent approach to marketing our community's assets while improving upon our weaknesses. Our proposed budget is very much in line with prior years, we have been good stewards of the money invested by the public and the private sectors. Our requested increase in funds from the county is intended to be used to implement our Comprehensive Economic Development Marketing Plan, which I handed out a copy. As much as the board here is accountable to the citizens of this community, every business leader that is active in the operations of Saga is accountable to the stakeholders and investors and employees of our own business. You know, we, none of us want to waste anybody's time, much less my own. We all need to ensure that our contributions, whether monetary or in kind, are invested prudently and used wily, wisely. I am personally bullish on the outlook for our community. I'm proud of Saga and the work of all those who have brought it to where it stands today. I'm proud of Saga and the work of all those who have brought it to where it stands today. I respectfully request that the board take this opportunity to increase its current funding levels and work with everyone to ensure that we have continued success and growth. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, let's close the public hearing. And if there's no objection from the board, let's take about a 10-minute, yeah, eight to 10-minute recess, just to stretch before we get into the last part.
That are much browner than that. I'm just trying to get some idea of what might be going on, and if we have any...
Requesting...
Request...
I'll have to check. I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Reeves. I haven't, I'm not aware of the situation. So, what you're telling me sounds like is if they planted them, then I think we can make them replace them. That I can tell you. If they are natural and they've damaged them, we can probably still make them do something. Because the idea is normally what we have is we allow folks to keep natural landscaping, if it'll stay alive. But if it's not, then, yeah, normally, we can get them to do something. But I would have to check and make sure that's part of the screening that they were required to have.
Well, that's the part that I spoke with her about. As a matter of fact, they went out and took some pictures, because the side closest to Garden Street was not a part of the agreement before the solar farm was approved, if you understand what I'm saying.
I think so.
Yeah. When you turn off, there's a ditch and some bad landscaping shrubbery there.
Okay.
Then, the land that they leased, yeah, you did have something in place in terms of buffers.
Okay.
And that's where those brown trees are.
Yeah. Like I said, I do know that our ordinance does allow, if they were required, we can make them replace them. If it just happens to be, you know, there and it died and wasn't required buffers, then there's probably a little less leverage that we would have to get them to do something.
I understand. But I thought you said that was required on that side, not the Garden Street side.
But I can get with Ms. McNeil when we can check into it.
That's fine. Thank you.
A quick question.
Yes.
On ordinances with the solar farms. I know we make them do a $50,000 bond or something like that, close to that.
I don't remember the amount, but yes, we do make them do a, basically, it's like a removal bond in case it were to stop.
Can you have them do an assessment of what the actual cost of removal would be and who would take it for future reference? In other words, is, my concern is that removal will cost more than the actual bond. And so, I'd rather give you the money and walk away and leave everything there.
Yeah, and that's been a, I didn't mean to cut you off, but one of the trickier parts to the whole thing when we set that up is that was a request that was made to have something in place to protect.
Why can't we put that part of the ordinance? And you have that part of your whole process of getting approved.
Is to repeat, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, whoever is going to take these, the panels, whatever landfill is going to take these panels, what is their actual cost that they're going to charge to take these panels? And that coincides with the actual bond that they actually have. So, $50,000 is an arbitrary number, but to store these panels or get rid of them in a landfill, my cost is $100,000. Well, as a businessman, you know I'm walking. I'll let you have that 50. And then, you can deal with the other, then it's going to cost us extra money.
Yeah. And again, the only thing I would tell you, we could certainly look into that with the...
There has to be somebody taking these panels.
Yeah. The problem has been really is trying to get, what the folks at home with solar farm companies is getting anybody to actually give them the bond. It's been a challenge, because this is such a new industry and such a new thing that they're just having trouble. But certainly, we can look into that. And we'll keep trying to work with the industry to see what we can do to protect both sides.
I just want to protect us as a unit, that's for sure.
Could you also get the council involved in that, and maybe if it's necessary?
In terms of what, sir? I'm sorry.
Of the bond and making sure that if there's any other guarantees or anything that we can merge with that to make it happen.
We can. I mean, typically, we generally, well, certainly up to you. I mean, if you want to, where we would have you approving that bond, that would just be an extra step in that process. That's probably not necessary, but certainly, if you would want us to bring that to you, we could. The biggest thing, I think, like I said, at this point, what we're hearing, the criticism has been, even when we first started talking about the bond, was that a lot of the folks who were installing these are saying they can't get anyone to get them, to grant them or write them a bond for this. So, trying to get into the details of that, it's going to be even more challenged. But certainly, we'll pursue it, see what we can do.
Sir, are these people just building them without a bond?
A lot of places, yeah. And that's what resistance we got. We were one of the few places in North Carolina supposedly that was requiring this. I think we set, we set the $50,000. That kind of came out of some negotiation we had, based on what was reasonable. Again, it was just a unknown.
You might want to check with Ms. Montgomery. When she was in here and we talked about that, as a matter of fact, she said she doesn't like to call it a bond. It was something like a letter of credit or something along those lines is what she said. So, and I thought it was about 100 grand. And so, maybe we need to follow up.
Yeah, you make a good point, knowing what it is going to cost.
Normally, it's based on the amount of the project, the percentage of the amount of the project, and normally where they establish the law.
The example I can give you, we use it quite commonly, is a preliminary plat for subdivision, residential subdivisions. If somebody doesn't want to put in their water in their sewer, for example, but they want to go ahead and record their lots, we would do like a letter of credit or a performance bond. There's a couple of different mechanisms out there. And you're exactly right. They would give, a contractor would give us an estimate, and we would do 125% of that cost. The challenge has been with these is there's just not, the industry hasn't been in place long enough, I think, that it's kind of accepted on the financial side of issuing these things.
Well, maybe not here in this state. How about other states?
Again, we can look into it.
All right.
We can keep looking at it.
Yeah, you know, just the cost of the project, that's how you figure out a bond. That may not even be, you know, that may work in, you know, a lot of construction things where we know reasonably our costs. In this case, I don't even know what our costs are. We even call the landfill. You accept these things. How much do you charge a pound? Because there's obviously...
Yeah, in certain situations.
Merchandise and stuff, yeah. Maybe a lot of them are going to want them.
Yeah. 50 might cover one project, but certainly not another. It's, yeah, I understand.
If I can add something, when the last meeting we had for the Environmental Affairs Committee, they have a company, and I don't have it on top of my sort of house, but there is a company that's on board to recycle solar materials.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Today, so I don't tell them what's down there.
Now, if you could pass that along to Marshall, yeah, so we can look into that. That's another option.
True.
Rather than putting in the landfill, they can come up with another before they'd be very...
At least if they reduce some of that cost, certainly, give you that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, resume the regular agenda. Under New Business, Item C, Discussion on Security for Meetings. Mr. Crumpton?
Chair, I received a call from Commissioner Reeves, who asked me to discuss this item with you and place it on the agenda. So, it's really a pleasure of the board to discuss security now. So, I've done what I was asked.
Okay. Commissioner Reeves, you want to add to that, or?
I would like one to look into having, what do you call those?
Metal detectors.
Metal detectors positioned outside these doors and get a cost for installation for consideration down the road.
I had another, okay, I'm sorry.
You got two entryways here, right?
Yes.
Now you got...
About both.
Now, you got two people manning those areas, those metal detectors, or just during meetings, or just during meetings?
Yes, they're costing a segment right now.
I was wondering if the whole project you addressed.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one thing to just throw out again for consideration while we are thinking about this long term, is I went and looked at a couple of them, of the metal detectors that are used in the county, like, for instance, at the high school. And, you know, when you see them, you know, sitting in the stands at the football game, or, you know, go into the gymnasium, whatever, for basketball or volleyball game, they don't look that big, but when you measure them, they're larger than you think they are. So, to put one outside this door, you know, takes up a lot of our lobby that's not very big. And tonight was a good example. We had some spillover for a while and had people standing out there. So, again, just, you know, for contemplation or whatever. To save money, one, because they're already there, but we could move our meetings to courtroom four, you know? And then, that would actually solve two problems. The metal detectors are already there, and it's near the Sheriff's Department, so the deputies wouldn't have that far to go right there. And also, we have a large crowd, like we did today, you know, we don't have to shuttle people from the bigger room and back and forth and that kind of thing. It's just a thought, you know, just a...
It's a good thought.
An alternative.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
That would be the option. I would certainly like to move there, because I think that in the way that our community and our world is changing, are you changing, I think that we need to have some kind of security in that sense.
And another thing that I was thinking about, as we're sort of shuffling things around at the courthouse, and we're going to be doing some renovations to the old courthouse building for the DA's office, you know, the timing would be pretty good to, you know, look at upstairs for us to use. And the county's growing. That's a good thing, you know? So, hopefully, we'll have more people come to the meetings, and so, we'll need more room. So...
Yeah, everything there at that table, I can't look down and see everybody. That would have to change us slightly.
We...
Draw me to a boosters.
Well, we figure out a way where we could look at each other and say, you're right, though. When we have had meetings, I sort of, you have to kind of lean up and go, but I mean, that's, you know...
It isn't hot here.
Yeah, we'll just kind of have countertop, you know, something, horseshoes or something. That logistics, that's a logistical thing. Anybody else? I mean, just get me in.
There's also video considerations, too, and...
Yes. Yes. Sure. Yeah, that might be something, too, is to talk to Kyle about how much it would cost to move the recording stuff over there, you know, just for looking at all costs or whatever.
Well, we probably need to still look at what Commissioner Reeves suggested.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And see what the cost would be, and then, look at the different options and see what we can make our better use of our monies.
Okay. Okay. All right. Budget amendment. Ms. Minter, sorry to put you off so long tonight.
I can't tell you. Captain Gibson was able to tell me the cost of metal detectors. They're $4,300 each.
Okay.
For one that would be usable here. Before you, you have Budget Amendment Number 18 for this fiscal year. This budget amendment appropriates $3,226 from insurance refunds from a vehicle accident with the Sheriff's Department vehicle was involved in, over to their vehicle maintenance to help them cover their costs this year. We're also appropriating $31,580 from the Drug Seizure Funds to use to purchase tactical gear for the Drug Division. There is an additional grant money received by the library in the tune of $14,868, along with a gift of $3,717 from the Friends of the Library. Those funds will be combined to purchase two self-service checkout kiosk stations. Health Department is appropriating two additional amounts for, that they've received from the state, one to purchase vaccines, and one will be used for the Harbers and Bioticians Program. And then, there's an appropriation for the airport to correct their quarterly appropriation amount. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Need to approve the minimum budget.
Okay.
Budget amendment.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? One quick thing. Thank you to Ms. Bennings for, I know it was in the consent agenda, but for receiving the State Library Grant Award for those computer kiosks. I think that's great. Thanks for continuing to look for ways to provide for the citizens like that. I appreciate it. Okay, the monthly financial report.
Okay. Starting on page 46, you'll see the monthly financial report for the month of April. We're still running slightly different from last year's percentage of collection. However, our numbers are good, because, you know, we raised our tax rates, so we're still tracking those. And it's just a matter of timing of some of, once the people have paid. So, sales tax numbers are still in line with our budget for this fiscal year. The numbers are down again this month, not down from last month, but down from a year ago or earlier this year, let me rephrase that. But we're still tracking in line with our budget, so we're hoping those will pick back up for the end of the year. As far as the spinners go, we only have one department that's over at this point, so as I promised you, some of those would continue to balance out. We got there. I was holding my breath. The medical examiners, I explained last meeting, we are, they raised fees on us after we adopted the budget. So, I will probably bring in a budget amendment to you the last meeting in June, appropriating some additional funds. We just got billed for some autopsies that even go all the way back into last fiscal year. So, we're at their mercy when we get those billings and the mercy of the examiners profiling those. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that report. If you have none, on the sales tax report, starts on page 49. And as you can see, we're still in approximately 4% to 5% growth pattern there. If there are no questions there, if you, Minister Andrews or Mayor Andrews was up here explaining to you about the Thayer District budget, he... he kept saying we lost fund balance. If you would like, I'll try to explain to you how that fund balance works. Okay, um, just like when we do the general fund budget for here, we have to use an estimated tax base and estimated collection rate. So with the fire districts, we do a similar type thing. The fire advisory board gets the actual budgets from the fire departments, and then they get the estimated tax base to the collection rate, and then I have to look at where we think they're going to end up this year. Always, we, or ninety percent of the time, we over-collect, so based on our base, we end up with more base, or we end up paying better. And then a couple of years ago, if you remember, we implemented the new tax and tax system, and you'll remember from our reports to you, we were skewed because we had overlap in the two systems of two to three months of double collections, and then the collection rates went way up. The state told us we could not call the budget at a higher rate than what we had collected the previous year, so we couldn't take that into account. So those monies built up in their account because we only give them what their budget did for. So, from year to year, for as long as I've been here, we've always looked at what they hope to have over-collected. In prior years, up till about two years ago, we used that, and it would make their rates, some rates would go up, some rates would go down based on what they asked for. Two years ago, the fire advisory board pretty much, and along with comments from our board, said, we will not use it if it makes the rates go down. That way you're not having a constant fluctuation, because if you use it one year for it to come down, then the next year, odds are there, so it don't have to go back up. So, in the case of districts like Northwest Pocket, last year, they had no rate increase, but they had a large fund balance that helped offset a rate increase that probably needed to be made, because while they had this pretty good growth this year, in several of the prior years, they had not, and they had been relying on that fund balance. I looked at them very hard last year and pushed the limit properly on some of them, as to what I thought we would collect through the year. Because I'm doing this in January or February timeframe, when we're having to project what we're going to collect through the rest of the year. So, those districts in that case, where they have been borderline trying to make it, it's caught up with them and stuff, because now we're balanced out, and we've been on the tax and tax system long enough that it's twelve months a year. We're getting pretty, you know, better about our collections and what we can estimate. So I've looked at them again, I went back when Mayor Andrews contacted me and said, Lisa, can you check the numbers one more time? I went back and tried to pull up again how much we thought we would collect the next few months on motor vehicles to see if we could push it up anymore, a few of them we did, still not enough to help offset that. So what you'll see is certain districts that are doing well, like maybe Lemon Springs, they're building up fund balance, because they don't need it to help lower their rate until, in such time that, you know, they may need, have a major project or need to make a vehicle, then we can help, use that to help them instead of them holding it, we heard him say a lot of them cutting back on their reserves. A lot of the fire districts have their own savings account in addition to what we're holding for them, unintentionally holding for them. So, hopefully that helped clear it up, that it's not lost, it's used if needed.
So when you say the tax and tax system, is that where the bulk of the tax money comes from for?
No, still the bulk of their money comes from abhorrent taxes, but in a district, in the fire district where you're taking the county and dividing it into smaller sections, it makes a bigger difference. So, in some of these where you had three, two to three, we got close to four months, almost doubled up, didn't we? It was four months, excuse me, four months doubled up.
It's a quarter, really.
Yeah. That is pretty significant, and then when you went from a collection rate in a lot of cases of eighty-some percent to ninety-nine, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent collection rate, it made for some larger numbers, and so when I say larger numbers to that, it could be twelve thousand dollars is a larger number in that instance. So if you were to go back and look at what each department's fund balance appropriated, per se, and their budget is, you will see some significant changes this past year, and I'll bet it's going to come back down, and that's the problem that with fire district budgets, I mean, it's across the board.
So with the tax and tags, because with the smaller areas, it, it's noted, more noticeable since the tax and tags are bringing in a higher percentage.
Yes.
So are we getting closer to a real number?
We are now.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, we are, and that's what I'm saying, it should balance out now.
Okay.
But it's still, there's always going to be a difference and always going to be a calculation, because just like, we don't ever, in a fire district, where if you look at our budget and go look at the detail, you're going to see that we budget prior year collections. We don't budget that for fire departments, but there's always some there.
Right, okay.
Okay, just like, because if you collect a county tax, you're either collecting a city tax or a fire district tax.
Right.
You know?
Okay, no, that was helpful.
Let me ask you about the fire marshal. I understand his salary comes out of the fire districts. How do you arrive at, how much comes out of each district?
It's based on the base of the district. The fire marshal's budget is given to Mayor Andrews, and it is divvied out amongst the districts by the base of the district, the tax base of the district.
Would that change if you went to the
Yes, it would just be calculate, when they come up with a group budget, it would be part of that.
And would you be willing to share your opinion regarding moving to that flat tax rate versus where we are now?
It appears that it would be a better funding formula. I think eventually it could be more equitable, because you're right. Irregardless of where I live, I deserve the same fire protection that everybody else and every other citizen in this county deserves.
At the same price.
So, um, it's, it will be hard to implement, there's no doubt about it, because it's going to be hard for, because there will be some districts where their rates will go up, where others go down.
That's always been the question about, why has not there been more than, you know, that's always been the question.
I understand, the question probably is going to be deciding who gets what when.
Well, it's always been controversial, I mean, even, some departments feel like they're being penalized because they have really, for years, saved money and managed their budgets and worked toward that ISO rating, which in turn saves you, if they can lower the ISO rating, it saves you on the insurance rates, and I benefited from that, it came fear.
What you could do even, and you could do it even amongst individual districts, but especially if you were to go to a unified rate, this excess funds I'm just talking about, you decide to set that aside to build a reserve that can then be used to help fund equipment additions, things like that, that come up.
We've got quite a few stations that are looking at needing to replace vehicles that are in the twenty-five, thirty years of age.
So you could keep that more under control and have a better sense of what funding is out there for them if you pull it all in-house.
I was really hoping that you would just submit something along with the
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to try and work it out tonight, but
No, I apologize for that, I understand.
But no, you made some very good points.
Wanted to give y'all the chance to understand how that worked when, because I could see some of the faces earlier, so.
Sometimes it's clear as mud.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, county managers report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I want to introduce Cameron Harmon and Jamie Wicker, these two ladies who have been sitting out here for the duration of this meeting. They are my classmates at Wingate University, and, uh, part of a class assignment, they had to attend a public meeting, and I invited them here so they could go through the same torture that I get to go to.
I knew torture was going to be the word.
Anyway, I welcomed them here, I wanted to Yes, sir, that is my evaluation.
Yeah, we got an evaluation tonight to fill out.
Ongoing projects, uh, the Saly Park, uh, bids were open last week. We already have an issue with the low bidder, um, they withdrew their bid, and now we have to talk with council about what to do next, because there are some issues with that, so. We're in a holding pattern on that, and I'm not sure that we will get to award that bid at the next meeting, we may have to do something else, so.
Low bidder pulled his bid?
Yes, sir.
Did they have a bid bond?
Yes, sir. And the board will probably have to vote on whether to release the bid bond or hold it. He's claiming clerical error, um, they were three hundred thousand dollars low.
Clerical error. Until he's got one.
Significant error.
Anyway, uh, we'll get to discuss that probably at the next meeting, because we're still evaluating. The land use plan revision, uh, the chair and I went to a meeting on April twenty-eighth, I think, was Mr. Sloan there? I think you were there at that meeting as well, and I included the PowerPoint presentation that we were given about the land use update. It, the best part about it is the timeline, so you'll have a timeline on where we're headed doing the community assessment and outreach from April to October. Prepare the draft plan in November two thousand sixteen to March two thousand seventeen. Prepare the final plan in April two thousand seventeen, and then hopefully have adoption by all three boards in July two thousand seventeen, so. You know, it's going to take a lot to get the community involved, and so that's why it takes, you know, quite a, about a year to do that. Wanted to congratulate Lisa Mentor and her staff on obtaining the GFOA Award for Financial Excellence for the twentieth consecutive year.
That's fantastic.
Accomplishment.
Big anniversary for that.
Yes, yes. We've been approached by the Lee County Arts Council, and this item will be on the agenda next month, but there's a grassy area between Horner Boulevard and the parking lot that the county still owns, and we still maintain it, and the Arts Council didn't take it when all the transaction occurred, you know, fifteen years ago, whenever that, that happened, because they didn't want to have to maintain it. So now they want it because they've received a donation to pave it. So we'll be making a recommendation at the next meeting that we go ahead and transfer that property to them so that they can pave it, and we won't be responsible for it anymore. So they get it with the building, it's a good thing. Enclosed you have the building inspections report and other reports, on page fifty-four is the upcoming meeting schedule. Wednesday is the county assembly day, um, we have a conflict now with the passing of former county attorney Hoyle. His funeral will be at two o'clock on Wednesday, so I will not be going Wednesday, I'll be going to the funeral instead. So next week was supposed to be our budget workshop at five o'clock. We were supposed to decide tonight, tonight, whether indeed we were going to hold it or not, so the board needs to decide what they're going to do that. And then here's the rest of the schedule for the summer. The clerk wanted to make sure everybody had those dates down properly for our commission meetings. That's my report, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, well, is, can I get your feedback on, on the proposed workshop for next Monday? We, I know we've had a correction with the Boys and Girls Club, we've had the two comments from Saga, um.
They, did they send you a letter?
I, I have, I have, they, they have contacted me multiple times, yes, so that, um, he, he really does want to come and speak before the board.
Was he told to be here tonight or?
No, no.
What, they submit something to you in writing, or?
Yes, a request to, to come for a workshop.
Maybe we got a copy?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, and I did not bring it with me, but I'll, I'll make sure I get it to you. Basically, it was a, um, probably one of the best letters I've ever seen as far as just taking responsibility for a mistake. And, you know, when we looked at the, um, their budget request, it was thirty-five hundred dollars, and typically we've been giving Boys and Girls Club ten thousand for the bus transportation, and, and he admitted, just with the, with, with him being new to the position, and then I think they had some new accounting things going on.
He stopped me at Rotary and told me that they had made a mistake.
Yeah, I mean, but it was, it was, like I
It wasn't ten thousand dollars, was it?
No, it was, it was
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred is what they requested, but they wanted to request ten thousand, it was just a, a mix-up in the requests. And, and he, you know, like I said, I, I apologize for not bringing the letter with me, but, um, I should have done that, but it was truly the best letter I think I've ever seen as far as just taking responsibility for a mistake.
So I also want to have a discussion about the Saga budget in the workshop.
So we need to have a workshop, right?
Not long.
Yeah, it's going to take me long to say what I'm going to say. I mean, I can say it now if you want to, I think we really need to consider funding the marketing. I've been watching, I know what big business is like, and to bring a big business here, we have to market this county. And I don't know about all the deals in the past, or what has been promised or not promised, I just know from the standpoint of where we are today, and I, I supported the visitor center to market Saga and economic development, and I support marketing this county to try to bring business here, and it takes money to do it. Even in a global economy, you're competing against instantaneous decisions now versus what used to take four to six months. And unless you touch the world, which it takes funds to do it with the technology, I feel like we need to support that budget.
I would, I would, no, I do have a response, I, I would have a concern of giving them the additional forty thousand without conditions attached to it. You know, they've been trying to do the marketing mostly in-house, and I think that maybe they're doing that because of maybe the budget constraints that they, they're feeling, or I sit on the finance committee with Charlie Wellborn. So, um, I think they're, I think they're funded in the right direction, but if they, if they would hire an outside firm to help them with that marketing campaign, I think it would go a lot faster and be a lot more effective at that point.
Their dollars would go further.
Their dollars would go further. Sure, they need to have the staff inside, but they need to have an out, they need to have that, have that, that presence, but. I did say this to Mr. Sloan before, so to be consistent, uh, you know, the, the purpose of the public-private partnership was, you know, eventually the county's contribution would go down. I don't really think that everybody believed that, um, if, if you're going to play the game, you know, you got to play it hard. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents on that, I, I just think that it should have conditions.
You know, I certainly want to accept my committee, and I kind of, I kind of agree with John, I say, you know, I would feel better if they would come next year and talk to us about it, and come and say, look, this is what we've done. Here's any new job involved, or two new industries, this is what we've done, and, you know, uh, you know, they're doing an excellent job, and I want them to continue to move forward, but I'm not so sure we need to do it this year.
Well, I think, ju- just, um, you know, like Mr. Joyce said when he was here earlier, you know, a, a large part of their success this year, uh, and, and what's getting ready to come up, uh, are, are expansions of local businesses. You know, they're, they're starting to feel better, and, and, um, they're, they're expanding and, and adding more shifts and, uh, and, and more product lines, and that's a great thing. But as far as sort of landing that big fish that we all were wanting them to land, I think that's what Commissioner Sloan is talking about, um, and, and we did have a great meeting with Harvey Schmidt. I guess it's been a week before last now, uh, he is Charles Hayes's replacement with RTRPP, and I enjoyed getting to meet with him, we had a great meeting, um, and it, it was a very candid meeting about how we felt like we had kind of gotten short shrift for the money that we've been paying, uh, over the last few years. And he understood that very well, and we had some really good And he understood that very well, and we had some really good back and forth about what we expected from that organization. And he had some good ideas. They are getting ready to just totally turn that sort of inside out and do things differently. And, and, and do more of a regional type outlook. You know, it's funny, when, when RTRPP started, you know, they think that Johnston County is being a really growing area, you know? But good gracious, look at it now. And now they're starting to look at us, you know, and, and of course with the huge growth that Chatham County is getting ready to experience. So we had a lot of discussion about all of us working together, really, you know, arm in arm, you know, high tide raises all boats kind of thing. It shouldn't be, you know, Chatham wins and we lose or something to that effect. We all need to start getting together more with that organization and the leadership from the counties and the cities and, and helping each other. But another big part of that was, we had to do a better job of marketing our county. You know, when we're, when we're compared to some of these other counties around us, you know, I mean, and I know we don't have the budget that Wake or Orange or Durham or Chatham has, but when you look at it per capita, we're still underspending, you know?
Let me ask you this, what were all we in with tourist tax? And that was supposed to be short session, we were supposed to be looking at tourist tax.
I was, I was gonna get to that, but, no, 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 that's okay, I mean, this is a good time to insert it.
I'm tying that to this, I'm tying that to this increase I asked you for, you know, that's thirty thousand dollars, next year would be available, you know?
Well, the bill that Senator Raven proposed, like, yes, week before last now, is essentially the same bill that he proposed at the end of the session that didn't make it out of committee because of some technical issues. So what I'm being told is they don't think the House will pass it, just like they didn't before. So Ms. Thrash has constructed a letter that she's asked me and Mayor Mann to sign that I was going to talk to this board about tonight because I certainly wouldn't sign it without your approval. And essentially, you know, and again, I, I can, I, I haven't actually read through the letter myself because of the things that happened yesterday. But essentially, it's just encouraging Senator Raven to, to reconstruct the bill so that it'll pass.
That's what I think it is. What have we got to do to get it passed and get it through the House?
Well, that has to get out of committee.
They had to pass one house already before, in the short session, before it can go through, unless it's some special arrangement, isn't there? Isn't that how it works in short sessions? Then pass one house, then it's, you gotta wait till the long session, I think.
Well, I, I think that that's correct. The, the problem is that the House bill may very well be different than the Senate bill. It makes it out of the House and goes to the Senate, Senate rejects it, it's pretty much dead on arrival. If the Senate committee never releases his bill, the House gets nothing to, to compare.
My, my question is, wasn't Duke supposed to help us with a lot of this? Kind of helping us advertise, sample, help us with their growth and use their people for all this stuff? Are they talking Saga, are they getting together with them, using their big resources?
They, they, I think they do meet, you know, I think the McCallum-Sweeney project was really, you know, that, that was sort of valued at, was it thirty-five thousand dollars was sort of the value? I think was the number that sticks in my head for, for the initial McCallum and Sweeney group down in South Carolina, you know, looking at the site.
Yeah, they're contracted by Duke, they're responsible for the Duke Site Readiness Program.
Right. So, you know, as far as that goes, I think that was their contribution. But I mean, they continued to, to me to be a part of that because I know-
Did they charge?
Yeah, they do charge, you know, discounted rates.
Yeah, Duke paid them, yes, yes, yes.
And then the city and, and Saga had to pay, they, they did not ask us to contribute.
All right.
So, um-
All right, well, it's still a little unclear on how much they're helping, that's the question, I guess.
Duke?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I can-
They promised us help, didn't they, am I wrong with that?
No, they did.
Exactly, right.
Yeah. And I can, you know, I can ask Joy to, maybe she can run some numbers and send us all, you know?
Well, not just run the numbers, but at least give an example of how Duke is engaging our situation and what they're doing specifically. Not just bringing somebody in, put on the show and then ask for financial support for having sent it down here. The other thing is, you were talking about what Saga has done in, I guess, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen. Let's request a list of those things, I'd like to see what successes they claim.
Can we have that in our budget, do you?
Sure, I'll see, I don't think there'll be a problem with having that money.
But I would, you know, if we're finished with that subject, I would go back to the Boys and Girls. We gave them, like, ten, though.
We gave them ten.
And they requested ten again this year.
Amended request, yes.
Well, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, from, from the incorrect application, yes, sir.
I'll support Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
So I don't know where anybody else did it.
No, I'm there.
All right, so we don't need to talk about that, we'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, we probably need a, need a vote on that, probably.
Yes.
To change, to, to change, to accept his request for an amended. Did you get that game, to, to request, the Boys and Girls Club's amended request for ten thousand for our budget for sixteen, seventeen? As opposed to thirty-five hundred? Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay?
We could do Saga and be that easy, we'd be done.
Of course you could.
I have to try.
He, he wants that report.
He got him, yeah.
He wants that report.
I ain't go to sleep.
Okay, well, I, I do need a vote, though, as far as, you know, I, I would feel better, you know, having a vote from this board, signing the letter to Senator Raven, you know?
I don't think, Madam Chair, that you, you have much choice. We have to do something different. If you, if you're trying to get something done out of the General Assembly, one side or the other has to make a move. If it never gets out of committee, it never gets heard it on floor. So, I, I mean, you can't send the House something if it never gets out. So, yes, make the request.
Okay.
But I do the same thing for the House delegation to make sure-
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly copy them with it too, so that they know. Okay, okay, so there, there's a motion for, for me to join with the mayor and send that request to Senator Raven for the occupancy tax, any question or discussion or input? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll take care of that first thing. Robert.
Robert.
Okay. The workshop, five o'clock, Monday. Okay? We don't, we don't have to vote on that, we've already put that on the schedule, but I'm just, I'm just looking at it, making sure.
That, that is, that's the workshop, we're being, what, we're working on one here?
We don't have a one item, do you want to work on, or we're waiting for it here?
In here? Okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, before we go to the commissioner's comments-
Sure.
I'd like to raise the question or offer a motion for the manager and others to formulate a resolution honoring Mr. Hall for his years of service. To be read that they, as, as a service.
Okay.
I would move that we authorize the manager to move forward at the meeting.
Started on one last night, so we'll get together and- Okay, all those in favor of a resolution honoring Mr. Hall, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Robert. Okay, commissioner comments, Commissioner Smith?
Two things, the VA clinic is finally open on Tranway Road and our new store is open and having fun trying to find things in the new setting.
They didn't keep everything where it was before?
No.
Of course not.
It's got new stuff in there, it's got those moving racks.
Oh, wow, okay, they went high-tech, okay, all right, that's good.
The tanks are still slow.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good news, that's good news, good news, okay.
Uh, I only have one thing, just keeping Ms. Livingston your prayers, she had lost a loved one today, so, that's all I have, thank you.
I was gonna echo the same sentiment, so I think that if it would be in, in line to maybe send some condolences to, to Reverend Dr. Livingston, if the clerk could do that for us, make sure some condolences are sent to, to her family. Also, I have a, maybe a concern, maybe not an issue, but a concern. This past week, I wanted to leave it for, for the commissioners' comments. This past weekend, there is a house about fifty to seventy-five yards behind my home and it sounds like a war zone on Saturday afternoons or sometimes on Sunday. It sounds like cannons, actually, and they rapid fire for about thirty to, thirty minutes to an hour approximately. I called the sheriff department on, about the incident on Saturday and called them back and they went out. And they said that the guy was target practicing. And he has a mound of dirt, I saw the mound of dirt. I'm not sure which direction he's shooting in, but I'm concerned about the direction that he's shooting in. I'm not sure scientifically have this dirt been tested, whether it was stop a bullet or whether he's shooting at the base of the dirt or at the top of the dirt because it's a, it's a pile. And my concern is, is whether there, well, I called the clerk and asked her to look up and see was there any statue that we could look at to see whether or not there was something we could do about it. However, what we need to do is maybe look at the policy and see what we can do to maybe keep this from happening in the future. When you hear gunshots for thirty to, thirty minutes to an hour, that's, that's pretty, pretty scary, not knowing who and what they're shooting at. And so Sheriff, Sheriff Thomas called me and he mentioned that there was only one ordinance that he could actually implemented, that time was a noise, noise, uh, uh, ordinance. And I'm not, it did not reflect on gunshots or, or shooting. So I think this board, we need to look, look at putting something in place for that kind of activity going on behind people's homes, especially around my home. I have a young nephew who had spent two terms in, in Afghanistan and on the war zone and he was shaken up a little bit and so I had to, you know, have a conversation with him. So we need to think very seriously about these kind of things. And so I think that this board, if the, if the, the manager were to look and see what we could do to find that there's some ordinance that we can put in place to stop some of this out in the country. That's all.
Commissioner Sloan?
I know I brought up Doc's issue about trash. I had the privilege of telling you, the day after that discussion was had here, all the trash that was on forty-two was picked up. And so I don't know who the citizen was.
I can tell you how weird it has been picked up.
If Doc did it, but I wanted to thank whoever did that, because I'm not joking when I say it was probably fifteen bags of trash. But it was cleaned up. But I have seen trash in other areas, so. And I would ask commissioner comment wise to please consider the marketing of the county.
Hang in there, Tim.
Fair enough, fair enough.
On the same, on the same note, I noticed out my way, someone's put up small signs, like a political sign, says, please do not litter. And it's hand painted, someone done it, it's someone, you know, within the community doing it, which I appreciate that. But I have another concern, too. I was approached this week by a couple of people out in the pocket area on Carbonton Road and Steel Bridge Road, D and D Grocery sits out there. A dangerous situation there in that intersection, very dangerous. No sight distance, people parked there at the store and you can't see at the stop sign. I'd like to see us get maybe our House members, someone to approach the DOT, and I think they've done us a traffic study before. But someone's gonna get killed, I, I, I know it's gonna happen. And, mangled real bad. I'd like to see us get our representatives to get with the DOT and look at the sight distances, see if there's something they can do to clean the sight distances up or do something to improve that intersection there. It's, I've been there at that store and I've seen some close calls and I've seen a couple of wrecks there at the store.
Little people crossing over.
Yeah, you just can't see, people parked, you know, you've been out there, you can see. If the Pepsi-Cola truck or the beer delivery trucks there, you, you're blinded, you can't see, you had to pull out in the road before you can see. And the other thing is, is some of these same people said, is there any way we can get our local law enforcement to look into some of the speeding on those roads? That people out there drive absolutely too fast, especially at seven o'clock in the morning. They're putting on their lipstick or whatever and driving seventy miles an hour, I'm telling you, somebody's gonna get hurt.
There's a lot of houses out there, lots of houses, yeah.
Going to work.
Okay?
But, but, I mean, but to, to Doc's statement, at that store, now, I don't know when they're speeding, but at that store, you can come through there at any time of the day and see a sheriff car there and a state patrolman's car there. And so I'm not sure if the speeding is on, on that, on Carbonton Road or whether it's somewhere, somewhere out, else out there in the area. But if you come to that store, I get, I, I, I guarantee you that you will see a sheriff car or a state patrolman's car there, pre-.
I don't think that has a lot of influence on people driving, I think they drive right on by because we got some people that live out in that area that own the force and they stop there at that store anyway. I, I've been there a lot of times and they'd be there and we'd just-
They might not be on duty.
I'm not saying, they may be on break.
I'm, you know, they, they're not gonna, unless somebody jumps a ditch or something, they're not gonna jump in the car and run after them, you know? It's, it's gonna, somebody's gonna get hurt there, you can count it.
It is a bad, it is a bad intersection, especially if you're turning left off of, of, I mean, I just hope it's, you know, I just hope it's not.
Okay, we're getting, we're stepping on time, is, well, that, is that it, not, is that, are you kidding?
I'd just like to see this board, if we could, ask our, our local reps to look in, get the DOT to look into that because
Okay.
it is a problem and it's-
Okay.
Just as a comment, why don't we also ask the local DOT guy to take a ride out there and give an assessment himself?
We could do that, but-
No, I'm not, I'm not saying not do it, you said, I'm saying at least give him the courtesy of taking a look at it.
Well, I know them, I could ask them myself, I can call and ask them.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we don't feel like we're disrespecting them, that's all.
All right, follow the comment.
When the Bueller Crankup started, the very first person I thought of was Commissioner Ed Pascal. Always do when that starts.
Yes, sir.
He was devoted and dedicated to getting, being a part of getting that thing done. And every time I pass it, I think about it. Uh, a couple of other things, I'd certainly like to know where we are on the Bueller Brown Road, if the manager knows. If not, you can just tell us.
Yes, sir. Um, I was told that they, um, have a contract in place for someone to come in and clean up the yard, um, of the, or the property.
The property owner?
It's property, yes, the property owners do.
Good.
So, um, Joe Cherry is out this week. He is supposed to check with them on Monday, um, and I'm not sure, when is Neil, Tim, when's Neil coming?
He's coming back tomorrow.
He's coming back tomorrow. So, we'll be in contact with Neil if there's no progress, um, 'cause, uh, he sent them a letter, gave them a timeline, and if they didn't show improvement, we would be hiring the contractor and we own the property.
It, um, Mr. The owner of the residence there, has he not contacted anyone from...
Yeah, he's con...
He didn't contact you?
No, he's, he's been in contact with Joe Cherry, and, uh, you know, Joe's supposed to check with him on Monday, make sure that something's progressing.
Another item is our agreement with the nonprofit to handle the Colton Road water filter situation. Yeah.
The, um, letter of agreement that we sent them thirty days ago came back to me on Friday with a couple of changes. I told them the changes were fine, it was just some wording. Um, they're supposed to deliver me two signed copies. I'll sign both, give them one back, and then we can deliver the check to them. 'Cause we have, okay, to transfer the funds to them from the folks that donated to us.
May I ask you this, good luck with that? What about the, uh, refuse center out on Carleton Road? When do you think, are you gonna try to get that into contract, get it done this summer, or what is up, what is up, bud?
He's back to... Thank God he's here.
He's toughening it out, thanks for toughening it out.
Now, we, uh, what, we got, we actually had to ensure the budget, but we done soil samples and determined that the soil condensation is bad there. And I got, Joe and I had talked with Mr. Trump about it, and we decided to increase the budget. The, uh, the recommendation is totally remove what we got there and start over again basically, is what we've got. So, once our new budget, once our new budget comes in, we'll move forward with that. Would it, uh, it was a situation, if we would move forward, we'd have a temporary fix, but then we'd be back in for four years. Mr. Trump, you know as well as I do how that works out, so appreciate your patience, but it is in this year's budget, and we'll move forward. Once the budget comes in July, thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
That was it, thank you.
Okay, I'll run through mine real quick. Um, since we met last time, Commissioner Sloan and I have, um, had the privilege of going to the Teacher of the Year banquet for the schools, and I congratulate Brandon Morehouse of Deep River for winning Teacher of the Year, and it was just amazing to, to, um, meet all the teachers from all the schools, each school's Teacher of the Year, and, and hear the innovative things that they're doing and their energy and dedication to the students, so that was a good night. Um, had a meeting at the Triangle J Cog, um, and was a great presentation. I'm gonna get with the manager a little bit later on, after the budget, I think, uh, and also talk with the sheriff. But we had a presentation by the, um, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, of Durham on body cameras, and it was probably one of the best presentations I've seen at Triangle J. It was just a great, um, uh, presentation, and with, with the manager's, um, support, you know, we'll get some copies to all of y'all, it was a PowerPoint, and it just had some really good information in it. Um, and we also discussed regional growth that kinda dovetailed with the RTRPP meeting with Mr. Schmidt. Um, had the gay nineties luncheon, um, last week, and if I had half the energy that those over ninety folks had, my goodness gracious, they were just, um, amazing. I had, uh, a ninety-seven-year-old friend of ours, uh, show me her new dance step that she learned on Saturday night at the dance at ninety-seven, so I, mm, I wanna be like her when I grow up. Um, and we had a good, uh, chamber event at the airport, um, Thursday night during the thunderstorm, um, and had, uh, I think Bob Joyce said, all total about a hundred and fifty people in attendance, so that was really good. Um, um, and also wanna thank everybody Friday night for the Relay for Life, uh, event. I'm sorry, Friday night, I'm still on the nighttime schedule. Saturday, from two to eleven, we tried something different this year. We had it during the day on Saturday and wrapped up at eleven, but had a good turnout for that, and the weather held, thank goodness. Um, and our senior games kick off tomorrow at the Enrichment Center. I now qualify to participate in the senior games, which I didn't know until I got invited to go. Um, so, you know, turned the page into a new chapter of my life. Um, but that kicks off tomorrow. Um, and, and to finish up, um, just, um, would like to give my condolences to the whole family. I knew this was gonna be tough. For those of us that had the privilege to work with him, um... Of all the people that I met in my life, um, he set the example for what it means to have honor and integrity. He truly did. Um, he loved God and his family and his country and this state and this county. And, um, he was a humble and faithful servant to all. Um, he truly was, and he will be missed. So, move to Jerome, please.
Move to Jerome?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.